In person and by electronic means. As such, council members may participate in person or by electronic means. For council members participating by electronic means, please ensure your video is turned on. And let the clerk know if you are leaving the meeting for the purpose of maintaining quorum. Council members are reminded that in accordance with section fourteen point one three of the procedure by law, members must enable their video to confirm quorum. If council members attending by electronic means lose connection during any portion of the hearing, we will recess until the connection is restored. If council members lose connection during the voting process, staff will get back, uh, get you back online quickly while we suspend the voting process. And the contact information has been circulated to you. Members of the public can view the proceedings via live stream and YouTube, uh, which we posted on X at Van City Clerk. And in case of emergency, where we need to evacuate the building, I would like to direct your attention to the exits. There are two exits beyond the glass doors to the left. Uh, if these exits are obstructed, please direct your attention to the four exits in this chamber. Please use the stairs, do not use the elevator. And if you require accessibility assistance, please remain at your location and wait for security staff to guide you to a safe location. I would also like to highlight that there is a defibrillator uh, at the end of the hallway, very end of the hallway past the bathrooms uh, of the council chambers. Um, clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Deputy Mayor Monty U is in the chair. Mayor Sim has leave of absence for personal reasons. Counselor Kirby Young?
Present.
Counselor Dominado?
Present.
Counselor Bly?
Present.
Counselor Fry?
Present.
Counselor Classen has leave of absence for personal reasons. Counselor Meisner?
Present.
Counselor Joe?
Present.
You have quorum, Deputy Mayor Monty U.
Thank you. Uh, before we begin, I have some announcements to make. The public may participate by speaking in person, by phone, or by submitting written comments to mayor and council. Speakers will have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. Speakers should also state whether they are in support or opposed to the recommendations and if they are a resident of Vancouver. Speakers representing four or more individuals or groups, including themselves, will have eight minutes to speak. Each individual or group being represented must confirm their representation by introducing themselves either in person or online. Individuals represented by another speaker cannot also speak independently. Speakers may only speak once and should follow along on X at Van City Clerk for updates on the progress of the meeting so they don't miss their turn to speak. Any comments uh, on agenda items can be submitted in writing through our online mayor and council public hearing feedback web form. This link will also be posted on X. Any speakers who pre-registered with presentations are reminded that the public live feed has a slight delay. To navigate through the slides of your presentation, please say next so that the clerk may advance your slides. Council is committed to ensuring that all people who participate in council meetings or public hearings are treated fairly and respectfully. The language we all use in these meetings should reflect uh, respect for all recipients or residents. And no form of discrimination is acceptable or tolerated. Discriminatory language includes attacks on groups of people and individuals. Vancouver's procedure by law prohibits uh, council members from using, from the use of words, tones, uh, speakers or gestures or gestures that express a negative view of the character of any person or group of people. Members of the public are expected not engage improper conduct, which includes uh, the use of expressions that promote hatred or defamatory uh, or that are defamatory as outlined under section seven point eight of our procedure by law. The creation of a safe and inclusive environment for the public, staff, and council to participate is all of our responsibility. Members of council may call a point of order if language used by another speaker during a meeting is not respectful. As chair, I will ask the speaker to modify their speech to ensure they're using respectful language. I also want to note that the city of Vancouver's longstanding commitment to equity, diversity, and inclusion, including the utmost respect for all genders, I remind council that when addressing speakers and staff, we'll avoid using gendered honorifics and will instead refer to the person by first and last name, role, or title. A reminder that council's role at a public hearing is to be a quasi judicial body, which means council is to only consider the merits of the rezoning application or heritage designation. Council members may ask clarifying questions from speakers, including the applicant, or uh, technical advice from staff, but should save debate after the close of the speakers list. After hearing from speakers, council may, one, approve the application in principle, refuse the application, or three, refer the application to staff for further consideration. And finally, if council does not conclude hearing from all speakers this evening, we will recess and reconvene the meeting on April third, twenty twenty-five at three P M. Okay, first item, C D re, uh, C D one rezoning, three nine six East Second Avenue. And uh, before we begin this agenda item, if anyone believes that they have a conflict of interest, now is a time to declare it. Does anyone have a conflict to disclose? Seeing nobody in the queue. Uh, the clerk will now read the application and summary of correspondence received.
There's an application by Colliers International to be Zon three ninety-six East Second Avenue from residential district to comprehensive development district. To permit the development of a twenty-two-story rental building containing two hundred seventy-three units with twenty percent of residential floors area for below-market rental units. A floor space ratio of six point four and a heights of sixty-five point nine meters, additional partial story or rooftop amenity space. General manager of planning, urban design, and sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set on the summary and recommendation. The following correspondence has been received since we furthered the public hearing. Six pieces in support, fourteen pieces in opposition, and one piece dealing with other aspects. This represents all correspondence received up to five P M today.
Okay, this is the first call for speakers. Any speakers to this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by the participant code one zero six one four four five pound for the close of the speakers list. That phone number will be posted on X and made available on the live stream. There will be an opportunity for new speakers uh, and missed speakers to be added to the end of the registered speakers list. We do have staff from planning, urban design, and sustainability here to present the application. All yours.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor and Council. My name is Oscar Erickson, and I'm the rezoning planner for this application located at three nine six East Second Avenue. The site shown in red is located just south of Great Northern Way between Brunswick Street and Prince Edward Street in Mount Pleasant. The surrounding context consists primarily of residential buildings ranging from single detached houses to six-story apartment buildings. Harisons to the north include light industrial uses. The independent Saint Francis Xavier School indicated in yellow is located to the northeast as well as the future Great Northern Way Emily Carr subway station. The site is currently developed with a three-story rental building. There are tenants on site eligible for tenant protection under the tenant relocation and protection policy. The area is well-served by public transit, parks, childcare centers, and community facilities. Consideration of this application is enabled by the Broadway Plan, a thirty-year plan which focuses on opportunities to integrate new housing, jobs, and amenities around the new Broadway subway line. The site is located in the Mount Pleasant North apartment area, Area A, which allows for consideration of rezonings for hundred percent rental housing with twenty percent of the residential floor area as below-market rental units. Buildings up to twenty stories and six point five FSR can be considered at this location. The application submitted March sixth, twenty twenty-four proposes a twenty-two-story rental tower. Two hundred seventy-three rental units are proposed with approximately fifty-five units, twenty percent of the residential floor area as below-market rental units. A height of two hundred sixteen feet and a density of six point four FSR are proposed. The applicant is proposing a twenty-two-story tower, two stories in addition to the specified height for the sub-area. The plan permits two towers at this site. However, staff support a single tower with two additional stories to minimize shadowing on the schoolyard and the future plaza at the Great Northern Way Emily Carr Station. This approach is preferred over two towers as the shadow from the second tower would significantly impact the schoolyard and plaza. The average starting rents are shown on this table as well as the average annual household incomes they serve. Starting rents for the below-market units are to be discounted twenty percent below citywide average market rents. Based on recent data, rents for below-market units shown in the first column would range from one thousand two hundred dollars for a studio unit to two thousand four hundred dollars for a bed, three-bedroom unit. A virtual Q and A period was held from July seventeen to July thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and eighty-six pieces of correspondence were received. Support was expressed for the building height, density, and location, the delivered rental housing, and the building design. Concerns related to height, density, and location, neighborhood character, traffic and safety, and local amenities and infrastructure. In response to public feedback, the height and density are consistent with the Broadway Plan for this area. Staff supported twenty-two-story tower that is carefully sculpted to minimize shadowing on the neighboring independent schoolyard and plaza. The development does not impact a protected public view. Regarding neighborhood character, the proposal is consistent with the intent of the plan. In addition, a condition has been included to reinforce the unique character of the residential streetscape through facade refinements. Conditions have been included to address traffic and safety concerns, such as provision of speed humps and upgraded street lighting. Local amenities and infrastructure will be delivered through the plan's public benefit strategy. The public benefits resulting from this application include the two hundred and eighteen market rental units and approximately fifty-five below-market rental units. The applicant will pay a utilities D C L estimated to be approximately two point six million dollars. The applicant is seeking the citywide D C L waiver. The proposal also includes a public art contribution of approximately three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The site was not subject to a community amenity contributions review as the below-market rental units offset any land lift. In total, the application will provide close to three million dollars in development contributions. In conclusion, this proposal aligns with the Broadway Plan and advances the city's rental housing targets by delivering two hundred seventy-three rental units of which twenty percent are below-market rental units. Staff recommend approval, subject to the conditions outlined in Appendix B of the report. Staff and the applicant team are available to answer questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you for that. And uh, if the applicant uh, team is here in attendance, would you like to make a presentation at all?
Good evening. Uh, I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight about the work that's gone into this project that you'll be considering. This project has been shaped through highly collaborative and thorough process with city staff. From the outset, we've worked closely with, with city staff to investigate and refine the best built form. One that minimizes shadow impacts on both the neighboring school and the future public plaza at the nearby Sky Trade Station. Through extensive analysis and dozens of massing studies, we have sculpted the tower and revised the podium, arriving at a design that carefully balances density with important community integration. Engagement with key stakeholders has also been a priority for the team here. We proactively met with the school and church across the street to review our design and incorporate their feedback. One concern raised was the need to minimize traffic impacts, particularly during the school pickup and drop-off times. In response, we relocated the parquet entrance, which is currently on Second Ave at the existing building, to the alleyway, reducing congestion and enhancing safety. Additionally, we're committed to working with the school throughout construction to maintain a safe environment for the children traveling to and from school. We've also taken a thoughtful approach to tenant engagement. From the outset, our full-time tenant relocation consultants have been working with existing residents to address their concerns and provide ongoing support throughout the process. Overall, I believe this project exemplifies a successful collaboration with city staff, stakeholders, and the community. It delivers much-needed increase in rental housing while carefully mitigating impacts on important, on important public spaces. We look forward to continuing the collaborations with city staff and building a project that enhances the neighborhood. Thank you for the consideration, and I look forward to answering any questions you may have.
Great, thank you. Uh, so if there are any questions from council to staff, the applicant team, I note that this is the only opportunity for council to ask questions of the applicant. Uh, Counselor Fry, you're up.
Thanks, Chair. Uh, so looking through this and somewhat familiar with this particular location, it's quite, uh, it's quite green right now and, and well-treed and uh, there's a lot of sort of natural environment. And so am I understanding that thirty-five trees are removed and there'll be eight replacement trees? I mean, I guess this is a question for staff or the applicant, whoever.
You can take it, you can take it. Just want to repeat the question again? Sorry, I missed the latter.
So I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm looking at the, familiar with the site, and there's a lot of trees there, a lot of trees in green. And if I'm reading this correctly, there's thirty-five trees to be removed. Is, is that all the trees essentially? And there are going to be eight replacement?
It, it's, it's not all the trees. We were able to save a number of the trees because of the setbacks on both second. Um, and uh, and so we were able to kind of keep, keep a bunch of the trees, but we, we did have to remove a number of the trees just because of the parquet requirements.
Right, so you're saying the trees on second are the ones that are more apt to be saved?
I, I believe so, because I think that twelve-foot setback that we've got, and correct me if I'm wrong, Oscar, um, we were able to save a number of those, of those onsite street trees.
Okay, okay. Um, the tenant relocation, so the report says, uh, there's forty-four of the fifty-three tenants on site are eligible for the T R P P. What happens with the other tenants? Are they? Maybe this is a question for staff. How, what's the situation for the existing tenants who aren't covered by the T R P P?
We're gonna, I'm gonna hand over this question to my colleague Molly Blower, housing planner.
Hello, this is Molly Blower from Housing Regulation. The uh, tenants that aren't eligible are not covered by the tenant relocation policy and therefore are not eligible for the um, tenant relocation policy um, benefits.
And so their ineligibility is because they're relatively new tenants, or they just missed the cutoff?
Correct. They would have to be, ha- have a tenancy um, longer than one year before the rezoning application was submitted.
Okay, and I, I recall there was a conversation at one point about, about shifting this to uh, consider how we might, and I appreciate it wouldn't necessarily apply to this, but uh, the conversation around shifting the T R P P to trigger on a D P rather than a rezoning, knowing that some of these rezonings may languish for some time?
Correct. I believe there is some, some conversations around that, but I don't believe that that has been updated at this time.
No, I, I appreciate that. So I'm, I'm just, I am trying to just think about the tenants who aren't covered here and, and whether or not they were here for a year or less. It's still um, a challenge. Do we have any, is there any tenant relocation work that happens with them? Appreciating that they aren't covered by the T R P P, but are they just completely on their own to find a place, or how does that work?
They, they're covered by the uh, the um, provincial policy for tenant protection.
Three months kind of thing?
Correct.
Okay, uh, thank you.
We've got our Counselor Fry, we have our, our tenant relocation consultant that can speak to that question if you'd like.
Oh yeah, great, thank you. I have a little extra time, so.
Hi, hi there. It's Matthew from Somerville Community Relations. And I believe um, you know, uh, there's quite a bit of work that will be going forward for tenants through the T R P P, and we have the Broadway Plan protections that are enhanced there for tenants as well. We have extensive experience with tenants uh, throughout the city and other cities, and we really look forward to working with them, working with staff to make sure those, those things are in place. But a lot of this work is going to be done in advance as well, so we'll be, again, engaging tenants in the next year or so, making sure that they understand the processes and working with staff to make, protect tenants through that relocation work.
Okay, um, and just out of curiosity, what do you, do you deal, do, if they're not eligible for T R P P, do you deal with them at all, or is it?
That, that's a good question. Um, at times there are, you know, there, there's going to be situations where we have to communicate all the updates about the project. There's going to be some advanced work there. And we would also work with staff and the applicant to see what else could be done. It could even be some advice uh, on finding housing, making sure that they're getting uh, you know, references for the current, uh, from the current landlord and caretaker, the uh, building management team as well. And of course, we're open to discussing that as needed.
Okay, thank you. Unfortunately, we're at time, uh, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Dominado?
Uh, thanks Chair, and then thank you staff for the presentation. At first, my question is to staff, and then I have a question to the applicant. If staff could just remind me and refresh what we embedded in the Broadway Plan around shadow protections involving schools. I, I seem to recall there was some direction around um, independent schools because sometimes they're forgotten in the context of our planning work. Um, can you just remind me of, of the framing of that in terms of the policy framework?
Yeah, thanks Counselor for the question. John Grotenberg Special Projects Office. So um, in the Broadway Plan, the policy is to minimize new shadows on independent schools. Um, so for, for parks and, and public schools, um, it's no shadows between ten A M and four P M between the equinoxes. For independent schools, it's really about minimizing shadows and, and making best efforts to do so.
Okay, uh, thank you for refreshing that for me. Um, so my question to the applicant, um, I appreciate you touched on engaging the school early on and some changes made around um, access to the parking. Um, can you just elaborate on your conversations with the school around shadowing? I see a letter that's in supportive from the Catholic Archdiocese. Um, but can you just describe a little bit like what that engagement and consultation looked like?
Sure.
And any other accommodations you made?
Yeah, no, it's a good question. So we, we took a very similar approach to, to the, the non-independent schools in terms of kind of how you folks and how we want to minimize shadows. So we looked at all of their play spaces and we looked at the same kind of, the, the amount of time of, of kind of between, I think it's ten and four. Uh, really when they're going to be outside using those play spaces and work to minimize any impact whatsoever. So there's two play spaces that they have in that school, and um, based on the shadow studies, the podium does not actually hit the, the, the one um, play space that's just uh, along second. And then there is um, there's like a gazebo that's um, uh, just on the corner there, and the tower also does not, does not hit that as well. So we, we took a very similar approach, even though it's, it's an independent school, um, to, to minimize the impacts because, because it's a place, place is, is a play space. And so we then went and took those shadow studies and we met with the principal, and we also met with the pastor, and we got their feedback on that. Also to make sure that we, we had their, a, a correct understanding of those play spaces because it was our interpretation. And also we had a correct understanding of when children would be outside. And so that was the feedback that we, we kind of took. Make sure that we, we kind of took it back to staff, and, and so staff had that, that correct interpretation, just in case children were outside at a different time than, than we had assumed that they would be in terms of shadow studies. But, does that answer your question, though?
Yes, that, that's great to hear. And I have one more question. Can you remind me, um, given there, I know there's the uh, Catholic school, but there's also Mount Pleasant Elementary up the hill. Um, how many family-sized units are included in this proposal?
Before you answer that, sorry, I just need to remind counselors to keep their cameras on so we can maintain quorum. Go ahead, thanks.
In, in terms of just twos and threes?
Yes, thank you.
And that's actually, I'm forgetting that, just one sec. Let me just, we've got our architect team here, one sec, apologies.
Thank you, no problem.
Oscar Erickson, the rezoning planner here. I can let you know that there is seventy-eight two-bedroom units in the proposal and twenty-three three-bedroom units in the proposal.
Thank you. I appreciate that. That's all my questions for now. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks Chair. Um, my question's around um, shadows as well. Uh, there was a comment uh, made around uh, this site being able to accommodate two towers, if I heard that correctly. Is, is this proposal the way it's shaped now with the one tower and the kind of, I don't know if you call it a podium? Uh, is that as a result of the shadow issue?
It, it is. Like if, so the, the, if we were to add a second tower, there would be a shadow on the independent school in one other play spaces. So it's not, it's not physically possible. And so that's why we had to kind of move all that density onto the single tower, and we went for a little bit extra height. We've also got a little bit thicker floor plates. But then if you look at the top of the tower, it's really quite sculpted at the top to minimize the impact on the plaza. But if we were to add that second tower to do, you know, hypothetically like a, a twelve and a twelve or something like that, there would just be too much of a shadow impact on the school. So this was, was really the best approach at minimizing the shadow impacts, but it was, it was tricky. It was really tricky. We spent a lot of time with, with city staff because um, the, we had to kind of manage the plaza and the play space, which were um, kind of parallel to each other in terms of the impacts. And so um, this was the only approach. There, there would be no way to do it with two towers.
Okay, okay, that's great. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay. Uh, we'll see anyone else on the queue. So this will be the second call for speakers. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by the participant code one zero six one four four five pound. Before the close of the speakers list, that phone number will be posted on X and made available on the live stream. Uh, we will now hear from the public. So any registered speakers and council jurors, please come forward to the podium when your name is called. Uh, speakers will have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. And uh, see our first speaker, uh, speaker number one, Pierre Denay. Uh, in person. Go ahead, you have up to five minutes.
Okay. My name is Pierre Denay. I live in one oh two three ninety-six East Second Avenue. And the event serves some of my worry about the traffic in the morning of the children arriving at school and the children leaving at night, uh, at night or at four o'clock in the afternoon by changing the site. But Brunswick is not as good depending of how the people going out, because with all the other big building that you build on that street, it's going to be a lot of traffic on that small, on that street. Secondly, maybe you should think about buying some new fire truck with ladder longer because uh, with twenty floors is going to be needed. And third is, what is going to happen to me? I have a, a small pension. My co-locatire have a small pension. We have a two-bedroom apartment. Uh, and it's twelve hundred and fifty dollars a month. I'm not able to pay seventeen hundred. I don't arrive, I arrive just right now. Or I'm not for it. And thirdly, you have give permission on the other street to build a series of small streets, a small house, two-floor, and now they're going to be under shadow. It's not only the school, it's all around. Thank you very much. That's, that's it what I have to say.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Uh, speaker number two, Stephen Bohas. Get that put on the screen for you. Okay, go ahead. You have up to five minutes.
Thank you, uh, counselors. Uh, my name's Stephen Bohas. Uh, I live in Vancouver. I'm opposed to this rezoning, and uh, what you see here is that a lot of green on that side, as Counselor Fry was mentioning, a lot of mature trees, and it's a good fit with the neighborhood with uh, four stories. Uh, human scale is built in nineteen seventy-eight, so it's a fairly new building with fifty-three units, and I really don't know how many tenants there are, but it's probably well over a hundred. Be good to have that count. And uh, you're looking at a proposal that will displace a lot of tenants from perfectly good housing. Next slide. In order to see everything in context, I built a rough massing model of the Broadway Plan that probably saw a few years ago, and here's this uh, proposal modeled up. A lot of details obviously missing, but it's the rough massing. Uh, looking north, so it is a very substantial building. Uh, the school, uh, next slide, please. Uh, another side view, and here you can really see a huge concern, which is the six-story podium plus an amenity level on a quiet side street. And the Broadway Plan uh, actually doesn't support that. I'll go into that uh, on the next slide. The school is to the north, which is, sorry, please don't advance the slide. Back one. School is uh, due north to the right. And uh, if you look at the towers, uh, I really don't see how you could put two towers on this site with an eighty-foot separation have a feasible floor plan. So I don't think that would go with the dimensions of the site, but I would love to see how um, it would have been proposed. I, I don't think that's feasible. So you are talking about a one-tower plus podium site. Excellent. Excellent. If you look at the Broadway Plan amendments that were passed, there was additional clarity, and this is actually one of the positive things about the Broadway Plan amendments, where you struck Section 11.4.3, which had some ambiguous language about how you could do maybe six stories in a neighborhood area. And that was struck to provide clarity on podium heights in residential areas. You can look at Section 11.4.3 in more detail and the discussion around that. It was essentially decided you can't really support six stories in residential areas on quiet streets, the impacts are too big. And staff did change the Broadway Plan, so we're looking at the amended Broadway Plan where this is not compliant. Next slide. In terms of looking at different impacts, I think kids are in school between the fall equinox and the spring equinox. And we've got to really look at that range. And how can you look at minimizing the shadows? I've done a lot of analysis here, but I just looked at one date, March 1st, which wasn't that long ago. And at 3:00 PM, where, you know, there are students actually out at that time, the St. Francis Savior School to the north, you can see the six stories, there's a lot of shadow impact on the outdoor play areas. I took the model and in the center, I just sunk it by three meters, lowered it to look at the five-story impact. It's a little bit less, but if you go back to the Broadway Plan's four stories, flooring the entire building by three meters, just to show the podium difference, you're going to see that there's substantial solar axis gains and you can have substantial solar axis gains for a few more weeks in the winter months or, you know, going into spring and a few more weeks in the fall after the equinox. So, you know, there is potential to enforce your four-story rule and also to remove the amenity level, which accentuates the shadows because this is going north on a slope. Next slide. I've got some photos of the school for reference and you can see the current situation. Next slide. The six-story podium is out of scale and it's not compliant with the Broadway Plan per the amended Broadway Plan. And the Broadway Plan only looks at solar axis for schoolyards and there is some mention of private schools there, but public schools, parks and high streets, but not for like other really public space, you know, that is compliant there. Next slide. And you are looking at displacing a lot of tenants, them evictions, and who knows what will happen to the people who aren't protected. And also that the TRPP was changed on February the 28th by the Director of Planning and I'm really concerned that the TRPP is being changed, appears to be changed without Council oversight. Next slide. There's a huge environmental cost and next slide. So I would, in conclusion, this rezoning is not compliant with the Broadway Plan and I would urge Council to insist on having a four-story podium without amenity level.
Stephen, unfortunate time. Thanks for coming in and providing your comments. Speaker number three, Lewis Villegas. We'll get that up for you. You have up to five minutes.
My name is Lewis Villegas, I'm an urban design specialist practicing and living in Vancouver since 1985. Next slide please. I am speaking against this tower in particular and tower plans in general because my work has made it abundantly clear that towers trigger crises in housing affordability, destroying families and destroying neighborhoods in the process. Next slide please. The mere appearance of quid pro quo between government and industry puts democracy on a knife edge. Government giving away concessions to development industry at every opportunity, creating the impression and raising serious questions about the state of our society is something I regret deeply. Next slide please. If it is Council's claim that by increasing the housing stock, you will drive prices down, then I will show this claim to be a fallacy. Next slide please. The housing crisis is really a land lift crisis, which means that the enemy resides within this chamber. Next slide. Let me explain how land lift works. When government increases density from 2.5 to seven times, land value is lifted exponentially. This increase is then passed on to the consumer, while housing has inflated at rates far greater where housing has inflated at rates far greater than salaries can keep up with. Next slide please. The land lift in the family neighborhoods is even greater, between 10 to 30 times larger. Next slide. This is a land lift downward spiral. Government kicks it off by giving away height and density, lifting land prices. Developers profit exponentially. Higher land costs, all government fees, et cetera, are then passed on to the consumer, whose household income will never rise at anything like the rates that the land is being inflated. Next slide. Here's proof, evidence. The government is feeding the crisis rather than keeping the markets in check. Houses have increased by 10 times, condos by 12.5 times. The green line shows the median income in Greater Vancouver. That is much lower than the 20% suggested by Council policy, thus putting a lie to the 20% below market policy. Next slide please. Affordable housing must be made a guaranteed right for all Canadians. Tower planning is using land to maximize profits for developers, maximize revenues for government, and turn homeowners into renters. Next slide. Land lift has created the housing crisis. It is a fallacy that adding towers with lower prices, to the contrary, all the towers you have approved have only served to lift land prices higher. To that end, the crisis, to end the crisis, you must add land, not towers. Next slide. Council must protect Vancouver residents. Governments must be the regulator in the free market system where greed or profit, you know, rightly moves the markets. The 1% vacancy rate currently in Vancouver, I see as proof that the developers have their thumb on the balance. Next slide please. Land lift is a strange phenomenon. As density and height rise linearly, the increase in house prices is exponential. Next slide. Only the investors win by trapping people in the shell game. As we can see in this picture, housing was intended to be one-third the cost of household income. It has been made to rise, I contend, by Council policy, to twice that amount. That means that whereas the household formerly had two-thirds of their income to spend in the neighborhood and on household goods, they now only have half that amount. The consequence of this and the neighborhood economy have been devastated. You can just walk around any neighborhood in Vancouver and see the empty storefronts. Unfortunately, the mom-and-pop shops, the small businesses, are the backbone of the Canadian employment economy. And so as these stores close, so do many opportunities for employment. Thank you very much.
Hey, thanks. And Lewis, just so you know, I know you have a PowerPoint for item number four. Apparently the clerks did not receive it, so if you want to resend that. And I will just remind you too that we need to keep on topic to the specifics of each application, not just the general.
Do you want me to respond or just take another?
Nope, that's okay, just for next time, thank you. We'll go to Speaker number four, Nathaniel Gumapak.
Hello.
Yes, Nathaniel, go ahead, you have up to five minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to thank Council for the opportunity to speak at tonight's public hearing. My name is Nathaniel Gumapak and I'm representing myself, my partner and our two cats as current tenants at the proposed rezoning site, 396 East Second Avenue. I'd also like to thank Counselor Frye especially for his advocacy and I have many anecdotal answers to his questions. I recently moved to Vancouver this past August and I'm opposed to this rezoning as it stands because when I moved here, I'm also not eligible for any of the Broadway Plan protections. I think it's valid to be concerned about neighborhood character, densification and view cones, but I also want to call to attention issues related to rezoning older or, as the previous speaker outlined, not particularly old housing stock that contains comparably affordable rental units and displacing current residents from their communities during a housing crisis. This 53-unit well-maintained apartment is home to a diverse and friendly community of residents of all ages and walks of life. And with four months of notice, we'll all need to uproot and find interim housing, hopefully having the same criteria as this place, affordable and friendly in the neighborhood. These older stock homes are both affordable and large, with nearly 700 square feet and a one-bedroom apartment. My partner and I have space for a living room, two offices, a dining room and a balcony. As developers maximize units and profits by squeezing tenants into smaller and smaller floor plans full of studios and junior one beds, it's increasingly unlikely to find homes suitable for renters and families and it's no wonder why more and more young people are choosing to leave this beautiful city. Because of the mass redevelopment happening through the Broadway Plan, this effect is amplified all across rezoned, affordable, old stock rental suites. Where will we all go if we're all told to leave at the same time? These buildings claim to add to the housing supply but will end up amplifying demand without active regulation. Development is a good thing when it's done right and it makes sense to develop near transit hubs. However, many individuals, including myself, are falling through the cracks as developers find ways to profit off of tenants and skirt the protections that the City of Vancouver should be enforcing. Developers have no incentive to provide more affordable units than the bare minimum 20%, which by the way, is just two more units than already exist in this building. It stands to reason that the only way to create more truly affordable housing is by creating regulated rent-controlled housing. It also speaks to a greater problem when the median income for someone who lives in Vancouver of around $50,000 qualifies or subsidize geared-to-income housing, which has a $58,000 cutoff. Before I moved into this building in August 2024, I researched the building and discovered the rezoning application and looked into what it entailed. However, because the rent was significantly below market for what it offered, my partner and I jumped at the opportunity to move here. I quickly learned that I was not eligible for anything beyond the basic eviction protections of four months' notice and one month's rent. It was also unreasonably inaccessible to figure this out. The information sheet for enhanced protections on the City of Vancouver site does not actually outline who is eligible and the eligibility criteria is in a 28-page bulletin written in legal jargon. There are multiple different phone numbers and emails to choose from on the site to contact and I have contacted them to confirm my situation. Additionally, because I'm not eligible, I haven't heard from anything without actively following and searching for resources and information regarding this rezoning. Citizens should not have to jump through this many hoops to determine their housing security. Through conversations I've had with other tenants, I found out that I am among several others who newly moved in after the rezoning application went through. And none of us are eligible for the Broadway Plan protections as residents need to have lived here prior to March 2023, but by the time we're demevicted, we'll have been living here for many years. People move for many reasons, but it's very convenient for developers to have fewer liabilities and people to compensate. I'm sharing my own anecdotes and not hard data, but I know for certain that I'm not alone. The report lists that 44 out of 53 units are eligible, meaning that just over 1 in 6 families here will not be compensated. At 10:45 West 14th, that report, which is item three in this agenda, has 43 out of 50 units eligible or 1 in 7 families uncompensated. Stories similar to mine have been covered by multiple news outlets like the Taiyi and the Burnaby Beacon. Some critics say that robust protections make it more difficult and incentivize developers to add housing, but why should it be easy to kick people out of their homes? And so I would like to say, please think of the human impacts and stressors to tenants in the City of Vancouver when considering this and the myriad other rezoning applications. Extend protections to vulnerable tenants beyond those who had already lived here prior to March 23. Residents of Mount Pleasant live here because we love the neighborhood, its walkability, its tree-lined streets and everything else it has to offer. We all wake up to the same beautiful sunrises and unobstructed views of the North Shore Mountains. The last thing we want is to be forced to leave. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll go on to Speaker number five, John Petrie. Hello, John. You have up to five minutes, go ahead.
I'm John Petrie. I own the top-floor corner strata immediately south and east and across the alley from the proposed tower. My unit number is 307. From my bedroom on a clear day looking north and east, I can see the Lion, Seymour, SFU and beyond. That far view is interrupted by significant foreground greenery, evergreens, significantly taller than my building. The city's webpage for this project posts a fly-through video. Around 30 seconds into that video, a web shot shows two trees located in the common area of my strata, just east of the strata wing I occupy. The two trees on the web shot top out the strata roof line. No such trees exist. The highest tree in that common area tops out below my unit. The greenery visually available at eye level and above from my unit is primarily provided by eight tall evergreens on or adjacent to the city alley. That's the north side of the city alley. All eight will be removed if the project goes ahead. We value mature trees in Vancouver. Yet I have not seen in my perusal of the city's publicly available documents, a clear statement that the project will result in the city alley bordering, being denuded on its north side of all large trees. I got that information by writing directly to the planner. Shown on the city's fly-through, excuse me, shown on the city's fly-through of the project at minute 1:05, is a courtyard bounded on the south by the alley, on the east by the tower and on the north and west by the podium of the project. Apparently there are five stories high. Two unimpressive trees shown on the north side of that courtyard. Ornamental vegetation is shown on the roof edge to the north and similar ornamental vegetation at ground level on the alley. I've been told by a planner that the vegetation shown in the video is for illustration purposes. That is, there's no commitment it'll be there. I'm uncomfortable with the misrepresentation of trees on my strata property, the lack of a full disclosure of the removal of significant trees on or adjacent to the whole project's southern border, and the failure to commit to any replacement of the removed trees. We in my strata who face north or east on the second and third floors will lose most of our views of green trees if the project proceeds as prescribed. And it seems, given the city's cavalier attitude to the facts, that the city puts no value on that loss. My name again, John Petrie. Thank you.
Thank you, John. The speakers list for registered speakers. This will be the third and final call for speakers. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to Council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by the participant code 1061445. Before the close of the speakers list, the phone number will be posted on X and made available on the live stream. And if there are any additional speakers and council team members, please come forward to the podium. Now we'll take a five-minute recess for any additional speakers to call in or come forward to the podium. Line or in person provide comments on this item? Okay. Nope. Okay. Seeing no further speakers, the speaker's list is now closed. And uh, any other public comments received after five P M? No. Okay. Seeing there are no further public comments, uh, I will now close the receipt of public comments as well. Does the applicant uh have any closing comments? Nope. Does the staff have any closing comments? No closing comments from staff? Okay. Does council have any final questions for staff? And Council Meisner, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks Chair. Um, I just wanted to address, um, I guess your questions to staff. Uh, there were some comments made by the second speaker with the presentation. Um, the first one was around, um, the speaker's assertion that this proposal is non-compliant with the Broadway Plan. I was just hoping that staff could address that.
Hi, I'm Michelle Alborg, a development planner. Uh, this is compliant with the Broadway Plan. Um, in terms of there's a relaxation on the height, which is allowed, and then the uh, the podium, um, at the time of the rezoning application, there's consideration to relax to six stories to uh, address shadowing concerns.
Mm-hmm. So those relaxations are permitted on a case-by-case basis? Is that correct?
Correct.
Thanks for clarifying that. One more question, um, also, um, raised by the second speaker uh, with the presentation was around, um, the, um, uh, displacement piece, and I just wanted to confirm, um, the TRPP and Broadway Plan allows, um, like the resident will be relocated uh, temporarily, the rent topped up, and then they have first right of refusal in the new building at the below-market rent. Is that correct?
Hello, Molly.
Hi, Molly.
Molly from Housing here. Uh, correct. The eligible tenants will be uh, provided enhanced protections, including right of first refusal um, to return to the new building at their current rent or a twenty percent discount on citywide average market rents, along with the temporary top-up that you were speaking of.
Okay, so you just, I just wanna just double check there. They, they'll be able to come back to the new building at their current rent? After?
Yes, they will. They will have the choice between, uh, returning to at their current rent or a twenty percent discount on citywide average market rents, whichever is less and up to the tenant.
Okay, um, I really appreciate all that clarification. Um, there's a lot of misinformation in that, um, that presentation, so I appreciate the opportunity to clarify that for the record. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Council Meisner. Uh, clerk, do we, did we receive any additional public comments since the close of public comments? Okay, council will now make a decision on this application. Do we have a mover for the recommendation?
To move, Chair.
Uh, moved by Council Meisner and seconded by Council Delmonado, I think. Council, any discussion? Council Frye, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks Chair. Um, and 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 I'll, I'll be supporting this application. I mean, it is, uh, despite some of the assertions, it is compliant with the Broadway Plan. I think they've done a good job of managing the shadowing on the schools. Uh, it's obviously within the transit-oriented development kind of rings that the provinces described and 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 the Broadway Plan, so it checks a lot of the boxes in that sense. Um, I do just want to acknowledge that that to the one speaker referencing their own living arrangements and that they'd been in that that uh, particular apartment since, uh, I think they said twenty twenty-three, and it's likely that there won't be a D P issued for this property, uh, for probably at least another year, I would guess, so you know, this, this, these, these are the kind of situations that I think that, um, unfortunately, I, I'm, I'm, I am worried that the elements of the Broadway Plan, and I, I think this developer has done everything right, and I appreciate that Somerville is doing the tenant, uh, management and 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 I, and I hope, uh, to their, you know, to their suggestion that they said that they do help other tenants that aren't necessarily qualifying within the TRPP. But I, I just have to, you know, reflect and default to the fact that, you know, these decisions do have, uh, impacts on folks who live and work in our city, and 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 that's the part that kind of stresses me out when we deal with a lot of these, so uh, I appreciate that our staff are working on him on maybe reexamining how the TRPP might get triggered, for instance, say on a, on a, on a D P rather than a rezoning, knowing that, you know, these folks who otherwise won't qualify for the TRPP based on the decision we make today may yet be there for another one, two, three years and, uh, and and still face the same struggles relocating, so I, I, I just wanna name that and, uh, and I hear it and I, and it's frustrating for me, but I, I do think this is an otherwise excellent project and do, uh, uh, support it, but I have that concern. I, and thanks for allowing me to speak to that, Chair.
Thank you, Council Frye. Uh, seeing no us in the queue, council members, um, are reminded that participating, those participating virtually must have their video, uh, enabled. Uh, if it is disabled, they will be marked absent for the vote pursuant to section fourteen point one three, the procedure by law. Uh, so I'm now gonna call the vote. Clerk, can you take us to a voting screen? Please register your vote. And thank you. That passes with, uh, all seven present in favor. Okay, we'll move on to our second item of the night. That's C D one rezoning two one 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 Main Street. Before we begin this agenda item, if anyone believes they have a conflict of interest, now is the time to declare it. Does anyone have a conflict to disclose? Seeing no one in the queue. Clerk will now read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by Musun Kotel Mackey Partnership to rezon two one 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 Main Street from industrial district to comprehensive development district to permit the development of a twenty-two and twenty-four-story mixed-use building containing four hundred forty-six rental units, of which twenty percent of the residential floor area for below-market rental units with commercial space on the ground floor. And a turnkey cultural amenity space, a floor space ratio of ten point oh five and a height of seventy point four meter with additional height for rooftop amenity space are proposed. The general manager of planning urban design and sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set on the summary and recommendation. The following correspondence has been received since referred to public hearing. Twenty pieces in support, forty pieces in opposition, and three pieces dealing with other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to five P M today.
Okay, thank you. This is the, will be the first call for any speakers. Any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free. One eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by the participant code one zero six one four four five pound. Before the close of the speakers list, and that phone number will be posted on X and made available on the livestream. There will be an opportunity for new speakers and missed speakers to be added to the end of the registered speakers list. Uh, we do have staff, again, from Planning Urban Design Sustainability here to present the application. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Uh, good evening, Deputy Mayor and Council. My name is Chi Chan. I'm the rezoning planner for this application at twenty-one eleven Main Street under the Broadway Plan. This site is well-served by transit, being in close proximity to future subway stations and next to bike routes, shops, and services along Main Street and Broadway. The subject site is a full block along the west side of Main Street between East Fifth and Sixth Avenues. The properties to the west are in the Mount Pleasant industrial area, while properties along Main Street and to the east include residential, light industrial, and office uses. Shown on the top left, the site contains the City Centre Motor Hotel, a two-story eighteen thousand square foot motel with seventy-five rooms. After it was acquired by the developer, the space was temporarily repurposed into seventy-five artist studios, now referred to as the City Centre Artist Lodge. The artist studios are work-only, and there are no residential tenants on site. The Broadway Plan is a thirty-year plan focused on opportunities to integrate new housing, jobs, amenities around the new Broadway subway. The site is located within the Mount Pleasant Centre Subarea G of the plan, which allows consideration of commercial, office, hotel, cultural, and secured rental buildings where twenty percent of the residential floor area is for below-market rental units. Heights up to twenty-five stories and a density of up to eight point five F S R may be considered. Incentives such as density bonuses may also be considered to support the development of arts and cultural spaces. The current proposal was submitted on May third, twenty twenty-four. It contains four hundred and forty-six secured rental units with twenty percent of the floor area for below-market rental units in a twenty-two and twenty-four-story mixed-use building. There's ground floor commercial, and there's a fifty-eight hundred square foot cultural amenity space that will be turnkey to the city. The recommended density is ten point oh five, uh, which is higher than the plan's eight point five, but this is to support the delivery of the turnkey cultural amenity space. Underground parking is access from the rear lane. The cultural amenity space will provide affordable shared light industrial production space for visual artists to pursue their work in Mount Pleasant. The proposal also includes a mid-block breezeway allowing pedestrian access between Main Street and the rear lane twenty-four seven with commercial retail units at grade for, for pedestrian interest. This table shows the starting rents as well as the average annual household incomes they serve in Vancouver's east side. Starting rents for below-market units are to be discounted twenty percent below the citywide average rents. These rents would be secured through a housing agreement and prohibit the stratification of units. A question-and-answer period was held from July third to July sixteenth of last year. A total of one hundred and seventeen submissions were received. Support was expressed for this, uh, project's rental, commercial, and cultural amenity space as well as for its proximity to transit, bike routes, and services. Some respondents expressed concerns about the building's height, density, and massing, and that it would block sunlight, views of the surrounding area, and cast shadows. Some also expressed concerns about the loss of the existing cultural spaces, the lack of community amenities, and the unaffordability of rental units. In response, this proposal meets the plan's urban design expectations in terms of form, height, and density in order to deliver the rental housing with below-market rental units and a turnkey cultural amenity space. The proposal provides adequate tower separation for openness and views and does not shadow any parks, schools, or public plazas. In terms of cultural spaces, the existing City Centre Artist Lodge, it was a temporary, it is a temporary use, and that was a private arrangement between the developer and the narrow group to offer cultural production space. This proposal replaces that temporary use with a new, secure cultural amenity space that provides affordable shared production space that's turnkey to the city. In terms of amenities, the proposal offers new cultural amenity space delivering on, on some of the key objectives of the plan's public benefit strategy. New amenities will also be delivered throughout the plan area to meet the needs of a growing population over the plan's thirty-year life. In terms of affordability, the, the proposal provides twenty percent of its residential floor area for below-market rental housing. This proposal contributes approximately ten million in public benefits, and that includes the in-kind cultural amenity space valued at four point two million. It also includes the D C Ls and a public art contribution. It also provides four hundred and forty-six new rental units with twenty percent of those at below-market rents. In summary, the proposal meets the intent of the Broadway Plan. Staff recommend approval of this application subject to the conditions outlined in Appendix B. So thank you for listening. Staff and the applicant teams are here to respond to your questions.
Great, thank you. Would the applicant team like to present the application?
Uh, good evening. My name's Peter Odegaard. I am with MCM Partnership Architects. I just wanted to introduce myself. Uh, we're here to answer questions along with Nicola Walth. We also have our transportation and landscape architects on the line ready to answer any of your questions, and with that, we will be foregoing a presentation tonight. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions from council to staff or the applicant team noting that this is the only opportunity for council to ask questions? And there is. Councilor Kirby Young, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. I have a couple of questions, and I wonder if you can just walk through for, um, council and for the public that are following this application. Now, we have a number of speakers. What the process is, is to able to move from the I C one industrial to the comprehensive development, uh, given, um, the sort of pressure that we have increasingly on industrial land in the city. Can you just speak to that in terms of what the planning um, framework is that enables the rezon from industrial to comprehensive development?
Hi, Counselor. Thanks for your question. John Grotenberg, Special Projects Office. So uh, going back at least a decade plus through the Mount Pleasant Plan process, that section of Main Street between second and seventh was removed, uh, from industrial designation and converted to general urban. from industrial designation and converted to general urban designation. And so the Broadway Plan carried that forward and now enables rezoning for mixed-use residential along that stretch of Main Street.
So that that predated the Broadway Plan for clarity?
That's correct.
And did that require a regional amendment at the time?
It did, yes.
And that and that was completed. Okay. My next question is around the sort of the fifty-eight-hundred-square-foot turnkey cultural space to the city. And I wonder if you can just provide a bit of color on what type of cultural use that would be suitable for? I mean, no surprise, and sadly, obviously, that there was a strong relationship between Nicola wealth and the proponents with the now-deadened Vancouver Mural Festival. And obviously, I know the artist was a very innovative one and that fifty-eight-hundred square feet would be suitable for 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 an arts organization?
Alex Sales, Senior Planner, Cultural Spaces. The space that is being developed is just under six thousand square feet, and it's primarily industrial production space, so it'll work for artists that, any type of art-making or visual art-making, so that would include kilns, it would include glassblowing, those sorts of things. So it'll be designed with better ventilation and higher ceilings and sound separation. And so, yeah, go ahead.
No, no, sorry, go ahead.
And so as part of that, we'll work to have a process around a nonprofit tenant who will operate this space, and then it'll work essentially as shared artist studios. So it'll be for similar to the type of use we see at City Motel.
Okay, just on a smaller scale, obviously, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then with respects to the the DCLs, sometimes we see with rental projects that you the the amount of sort of amenity space delivery is constrained, and yet this one is yielding the in-kind cultural space and the DCL estimate. So what are the factors that enable that in this case and still doing rental housing, which is often sometimes the public benefit we get?
Thank you for the question. I understand you're asking how this was able to generate additional DCLs for this site?
Yes.
Yeah, so usually would just be rental housing, but there was an increase in density. And that increase in density allowed the applicant to provide enough market rental housing to offset the costs and still provide a DCL. Just a reminder, they are taking the citywide, there is a waiver for some of the DCLs, but they are required to pay DCL for the utilities, which cannot be waived.
Okay, and that's the five point three million outlined in the presentation?
We have about the total DCLs around five million, that's correct.
Okay. And how much additional density was given over what would have normally been allowed?
Approximately one point five FSR. And yeah, the the plan allows for eight point five, and this application is getting ten, approximately ten.
Okay. And last question, if I can. This might be for the applicant, and it's around with the permeability through the muse in the walkthrough. The City Centre Motel-inspired sign or original sign? Remind me, I know that this came up previously.
Hi there, I'm Andre Linexita, representing the ownership, Nicola Real Estate. Thank you for the question. The existing sign, we've done a little bit of examination on it. Our intent is to replace something of a similar like, probably not to the original, unfortunately, but we hope to bring it into the future as well.
Okay, is there any other nods to the site in terms of the history of the site other than the signage?
At the moment, we're really focused on the the ground plane and the contribution that we put together that activates all sides of the site. The breezeway was a nod to interconnectivity from from Main Street through to the alleyway, which has already been activated by murals and other components. So right now, we're focusing on that, and at the same time, we have a public art contribution as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Fry, go ahead.
Oh, thanks. Yeah, I guess a question for the applicant. And just, you know, I do want to acknowledge the the contribution through the lease to create artist studios from this former sort of moribund motel. Because I think it has been a great stopgap, and it really has, I think, contributed a lot to arts and culture in our city. Was this always your intention to add this kind of cultural amenity space? Or did that come about through your experience with this creative sublease of the motel space?
It's a it's a great question. I think it's really important to have the opportunity to give it a little bit of context. So when we did acquire the lands in twenty twenty-one, the the original intention was to contribute towards the Broadway Plan and to bring new housing to the area. Of course, we had the existing buildings, and and our company does not operate hotels. And the opportunity came up to work with David and the narrow group to put together a very unique partnership, one that we we took on. It carried risks, but at the same time, it's carried significant reward. And we had the confidence from that day that we decided to to move ahead with it, that we should be planning for the future as well, if it is successful. So the evolution occurred over time. It occurred many years ago now, and we've worked significantly with staff and feel very proud as to the overall contribution that we're providing in this project.
Yeah, amazing. I do love to see it. So thank you. I think this this does meet some of that kind of cultural context. My next question is more for staff, and it's around the turnkey cultural amenity. So it's roughly about a third of what we have now, recognizing that that's was sort of ad hoc studio space. It wasn't originally studio space. It has been great studio space, but now it could be about a third the size. Can you explain to me what Studio Class B is as opposed to Studio Class A? I've never been able to quite understand the distinction.
Hello, it's high-impact, so Studio B is industrial use. So that's where you get the higher ceilings, the ventilation, the soundproofing, so you can do the higher-impact use. So like welding or glassblowing or those sorts of things. Right now, City Motel is really more doing primarily Class A, which is more something that you could do in an office or home environment, so.
Now, and it does help, actually. I appreciate that plain English explanation, which I never really had before. So thank you for that. Now, does it preclude things like cultural practices, like dance, theater studios, that kind of thing? Is this strictly, is there a covenant imagined for this?
Well, actually, we have another space we're working on in a site adjacent that will accommodate those types of uses. So we have a whole other building going in where the annex is that will not a building. We're going to reuse the historical school there. And so it's about ten thousand square feet, and that'll be more music. It'll be more suitable for performance and production space. This particular space is not that big, and we really wanted to land the type of spaces that were at City Motel.
Okay. And Alex, let me take this opportunity to thank you so much for all your work in cultural spaces in the city of Vancouver. It is super appreciated. I know the work you do out there, and I really appreciate all the work you've done in that space. Now, with that said, what 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 do we do with our groups that are displaced? How are we reconciling art practice that is being displaced from Mount Pleasant? We know what's happening. We know, for instance, a video-in, video-out, we're moved out to Renfrew area, and they would love to come back, and that was originally contemplated through kind of a turnkey arrangement, which hasn't happened. How are we ensuring that groups are staying able, are not getting displaced?
I think I think retaining spaces has been incredibly challenging because you have cultural spaces in in old buildings that are under redevelopment. So we've been quite aggressive on our team in the last five to seven years around our cultural space targets and pursuing new spaces. So that's been our focus, and we have quite a few on the go. We're sort of, we had a target of six hundred and fifty square feet of new space. Fifty percent would be community. The rest would be sort of city-owned, and we're making pretty good progress. It just takes a really long time for them to come to fruition. So we have, as you know, the space down at Prior Street and the flats. We have about six thousand square feet of industrial space there. We also have space downtown, some hubs. We have some artist live-work studios on Camby. What am I missing here? Well, we have a music space at Fern Seventh. So we have a lot on the go that we're working on, but it's very slow. It's painstakingly slow.
Appreciate that. It's like watching artists paint dry.
Yes.
Okay, sorry, we're at time there. Seeing no else in the queue. This is the second call for speakers. If there are any speakers to this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by the participant code one zero six one four five five pound. Before the close of the speakers list, that phone number will be posted on X and made available on the live stream. We'll now hear from the public. Any registered speakers in the council chair? Please come forward to the podium when your name is called. So speaker number one, Neil Wiles on the phone. Neil, you there?
Hello?
Hi Neil, go ahead. You have up to five minutes.
Great, thank you. Good evening, council and deputy mayor. Again, Neil Wiles, and I'm with the Mount Pleasant BIA. I am here to support this project. I think that Mount Pleasant needs the additional rental, and this project has lots of that. While I do lament the loss of the unique artist hub and event space, we all knew that it was only temporary and not a forever thing. On that note, I do want to applaud the developer for supporting this and not just knocking it down and leaving the space empty. We've had multiple years of great events on this space, and the developers shown the neighborhood that it supports the arts. I would hope that other developers would be inspired by this and work to create interesting opportunities in the neighborhoods that they're moving into, rather than just utilizing the current tax avoidance scheme and creating a gravel dog park. I've seen the plan for the space, and I'm happy to see small-scale commercial as part of that plan. These types of places create neighborhoods and create a sense of belonging. I'm encouraged to hear that they're planning on creating this vibrant area that will attract people and add to the activity on the street. In many of the recent developments up and down Main Street between Second and Seventh, we've seen a glut of dental and medical offices on the grounds floors. Although these types of businesses are needed, I feel that they should be on the second floor as they do nothing to create the character that a neighborhood needs. I hope staff and council take note of this, as so many spaces are being rapidly developed right now. And I feel that it's part of their role to protect what makes up the character and the history of the neighborhood. The other concern I have for this spot is the lack of traffic light at Main and Sixth. We're going to see three large buildings on this corner. One is complete. This one we're talking about, and another one coming up. And the safety of the pedestrians and the traffic is something that will need to be addressed. I will say that it is a goat rodeo there. It is six lanes. I see people trying to run across. There's no left turns, yet people line up to make left turns. It is something quite serious, and I hope that something is done before something serious happens. We have brought this up with traffic operations, and we're hopeful that something will come to help solve this issue, but it can't come soon enough. All in all, this application represents a win for the businesses in the neighborhood. It'll bring a lot of residents, and as we know, the residents are the economic engine that drive our neighborhoods. So we are in support of this and hoping to see that it revitalizes this little part of Main Street. Please approve this application, and I thank you for your time.
Great, thank you, Neil. We'll go to speaker number two, Lewis Galvin on the phone. Not on the line, we'll circle back. Speaker number three, Zandy Danizet. Zandy, here in person. Come on up. You have up to five minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you. So my name is Zandy Danizet, and I'm speaking tonight as the executive director of the James Black Gallery in support of this application. The James Black Gallery is a queer-led, artist-run center located in Mount Pleasant. Our mission is to amplify the voices of emerging and early-career artists, provide space for experimentation with multi-disciplinary practices, and nurture community connection. We have a gallery, shop, and studios, including ceramics, as well as hosting residencies, mentorships, exhibitions, workshops, performances, and more with twenty-five studio members. We are located in a building built in eighteen eighty-nine at one four four E Sixth, and it is slated to be redeveloped. The James Black Gallery has operated informally since twenty fourteen and has been a nonprofit since twenty eighteen. We have been regular recipients of city funding towards arts and culture and are actively planning for the future. The JBG is both a direct neighbor of two one 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 Main Street and a tenant. I also have my own studio space there, and I have deeply appreciated the model of transitional space, hosting artists in the interim at the location, and how the usage has influenced their application. It is important, as many spaces have disappeared in the area since our time at the JBG, in part due to prior lack of inclusion of arts and culture in developments. Mount Pleasant has a need for continued consideration of arts and culture as it hosts diverse practices and varied experience levels and influences collaboration, growth, and support between artists. The city doing so can also support public arts access and tourism initiatives. As the JBG looks towards the future, moving to another neighborhood like the West End would disconnect us from our community, audience, and away from artists who currently use our space because our location has, you know, safety and support that we provide as a third space, and it's a crucial community hub. Similar to how other industries like health and tech congregate in certain neighborhoods, so do arts and culture. Some developments have included it, thanks to the culture shift planned by the city, but prioritize different studio spaces, like we mentioned earlier, between Class A and Class B-type studios access. Or sometimes art spaces have been hidden behind, like, elevator access fourth floor, which really doesn't give them connection to the general public and decreases public engagement. I mention all of this as an application, specifically is a great example of paying attention to the needs of those located there, presenting an opportunity for existing art groups to gain stability, rather than continuing to operate in precarity and uncertainty. I appreciate the strides that the city of Vancouver has taken to increasing the number of art spaces in the city, but it can't just be any space, like we mentioned with video-in, video-out earlier. And so I think it is important to consider the ecosystem that is already present and what is needed. So what I would say is I welcome the opportunity for the discussions to be a part of discussions with the city about this and make sure the consideration is of the development is with the neighborhood. The James Black Gallery would love the chance to grow into and have stability in a new art space like at two one 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 Main Street. And we support the application because it's a great thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Zandy. Appreciate your time. We'll move to speaker four, Natalia Lebedensky. Hopefully, I pronounced your name right on the phone. Apologies if I didn't.
Can you hear me? And you did great.
Great.
It's just every every letter in a row.
All right. You have up to five minutes, Natalia. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. Good evening, council and mayor in absentia, and thank you for your time today. My name is Natalia Lebedensky, and I'm an independent curator, writer, and art consultant with a background in shaping large-scale, community-driven, and ambitious art projects across Canada. I'm a Vancouver resident since twenty eighteen, and speaking to this project, I was the curator for the murals at twenty-one eleven Main Street. And I was part of this project from its earlier stage, when I was the creative director at the Vancouver Mural Festival from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four. I'm here today to express my strong support for the rezoning application for the twenty-one eleven Main Street and to speak to the arts integration of the site as it is now and how it is shaped in the future. This project presents an opportunity to continue this cultural legacy that has flourished there since the transformation and embraces the growth and changing landscape of our city. We want more of them like this. I want to emphasize how important it is to keep in mind here that the way that the site looks now, the way that it is brought together by and brought to life by artists, by musicians, by events, by community groups like James Brad Gallery, the way that the mural by Fiona Ackerman-Kacey Hall in June Lee covered the twenty-four thousand square feet of the motel and its ground. This was always meant to be temporary, and it was only possible because it was temporary. This was a bold and visionary partnership between Nicola wealth, the narrow group, and BMF, and it worked. It showed us how unexpected spaces, especially such iconic ones, could be reimagined by artists during moments of transition and into the future. And this temporary vision has served to demonstrate that, without shadow of a doubt, how artists and creative spaces and events and bold artwork must have a lasting place here. And as a result, it has laid this groundwork for arts and culture spaces in the way that they're now included in the application, and the way that the alleyways are woven into it to the scale of the space that the amenity will allow. And this project is an important precedent and one that should inspire others to think this way about how temporary cultural partnerships can transform space and how ambitious ephemeral projects can be symbiotic with a commitment to dedicate a cultural infrastructure, sometimes in the same place. Vibrant cities are not static. They are a talent theft, which really is just a fancy way of saying it, but I really like the word. They're made up of layers of history, of personal, shared stories, experience, of memory. It's so easy for us here to slide into nostalgia, and yet a place is characterized not by holding on to the past but by ensuring that the creative energy thrives towards the future and builds and snowballs upon itself. Speaking here as a curator, this was the inspiration behind the mural program and the site, taking cues from the building, from its colors, from the green and from the pink that it was before, from Vancouver's Marilyn Street art scene, from the city as a whole, layering it upon itself, tensions and all. And the project was rooted in this understanding that cities grow, neighborhoods change, and art has the power to connect us and to hold the and to hold the past, present, and future in balance and to hold them lightly. The proposed rezoning continues this legacy by including a permanent cultural space and room for a mural program alongside the necessary public art contribution, as well as activation and event spaces at street and alleyway levels. It ensures that the creative activity that made this so special does not disappear but continues to shape the area, that we can go from small studios to glassblowing. For the purpose-built cultural space secured for the long term now and alongside rental housing with an emphasis on apartments suitable for families, this development also presents a fresh way of thinking about city building, one that embraces the necessity of both housing and culture alongside one another as part of a thriving urban fabric. I want to live above there. There's one concern that I want, however, to relate here, that we often see these dedicated public event spaces lose their connection to that community. We see the empty, underused, disconnected plazas without a long-term plan for their stewardship or clear permitting process on how to get there. And I hope that in the discussions between the developer, between cultural services and community groups and artists, that there is an emphasis on planning and emphasis on care for that stewardship of the arts and cultural event spaces and the connections between them and the many interwoven relationships between those for whom this will be their home, their backyard, their stage, their studio, their destination, or where they go to inspire and connect. In conclusion, I do urge the council to support this application very eagerly because it adds much-needed rental housing, of course, and also ensures that arts and culture remain as an integral part of Mount Pleasant's identity, unmistakably and boldly so. This project and its entire art embraces the...
I'm sorry Natalia, we're at time. Thanks for calling in, I appreciate it. Have a good night. We'll go on to speaker number five, David Dupre. David, you have up to five minutes.
Thank you so much. Thank you for being here. I am David Dupre, and I am the owner of the Narrow Group. I'm the person who took the city center from being a motel and changed it into the City Centre Artist Lodge. I'm here to talk in support of this project and not just because Nicola Wealth was amazing and giving me this opportunity because I actually believe in the Lordby Plan. And I think creating more towers and creating more housing will help Vancouver and help my children find an affordable place to live. That being said, I want to now talk about what councilperson Frye was talking about earlier, and that's about the displacement of these artists once City Centre is gone and what's going to happen moving forward. Vancouver has hundreds of thousands of empty square feet sitting around right now, and I cannot access it because I cannot get a business license to change it into artist space. There's this thing that every city councilperson here knows, which is a change of use, and it is impossible right now for me to get a change of use from something simple like an office into an artist space. I could easily house all these artists into a new building. There's lots of buildings. I just rented out two in the past couple of months totaling about 30,000 square feet that I filled with artists. The problem is getting those artists having a permit for the space to make it legit.
I'm sorry to interrupt, David. I'm going to try and get you to stay on topic. We have to stay with comments focused on the specific application. So if you want to discuss getting business licenses for other buildings and that, I'm sure someone in council would be happy to chat with you, but if we could just stay on topic, that'd be great. We got a lot of speakers to get through.
Absolutely. Thank you for redirecting me. So at City Centre, for example, the wonderful, awesome thing about this project was that it was a motel. So working with Alex and her team, who are amazing, thank you for recognizing that, Councilman Frye, we allowed me to keep the same use. And so that was a gift that I would love to have happen in other buildings, but unfortunately it can't. So I want to specifically thank Nicola Wealth too for taking the amazing chance they took on me and all the artists in coming into this building. And I think if other developers looked to their example and saw how fantastic that was and how there's an opportunity in the meantime, when you've got an empty building, to create artist space, I think that would be a huge boon for our city as well. So I want to thank them and support them and reward them for the risk they took on me and on all the artists in the building. So thank you very much, and thank you for my time. And yeah, it was great to be here.
Great. Thank you, David. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to speaker number six, Harrison Nesbit on the phone. Harrison, you there?
Yep. Thanks so much, everybody. My name is Harrison Nesbit, and I'm here speaking in support of the development as both a Vancouver and Mount Pleasant resident. You know, I think a lot of this has been touched on, but you know, I think that this development proposal is emblematic of great process and kind of doing the right thing as a developer from the use of repurposing the motel into an artist's community, then incorporating cultural space into the development are both fantastic additions to this area. I've lived in the community for over four years. I've witnessed firsthand the growing need for housing, both obviously in the neighborhood and across the city. Obviously, the opportunity to add hundreds of rental units, including a significant proportion dedicated to below-market rentals, is a serious, meaningful step forward to addressing Vancouver's persistent housing crisis. Given the proximity, obviously, to transit, shopping, Olympic Village, and Mount Pleasant, I think this only further strengthens the proposal. Beyond housing, the mixed-use development will, of course, bring much-needed commercial and cultural space to an otherwise underserved section of Main Street. As a resident here, it's, you know, been persistently challenging to navigate the area, whether from crossing the street safely. I am one of those people who crosses six lanes of traffic, not at a controlled intersection, or just finding vibrant community spaces. I think it was touched upon, you know, it's great to see the dental and kind of medical uses that are coming here, but this section of Main Street is suffering from an otherwise kind of lack of meaningful, you know, useful pedestrian life. So with that in mind, it's great to see that being a major part of this development. You know, new storefronts, improved sidewalks, much-needed crosswalk. I think all of this will better connect this part of Main Street with the rest of Mount Pleasant and ultimately make it for a more welcoming and accessible place for everyone. So with that in mind, all those reasons, again, I strongly support the development, and thank you, everybody, for your time.
Great, thanks Harrison. Short and sweet. We'll move on to number seven, Vince Beiser on the phone. Vince, you there?
Yeah, hi. Can you hear me?
Go ahead. You have up to five minutes.
Great, yeah, thanks. Yeah, my name is Vince Beiser. I'm a writer and a journalist, and I live in Mount Pleasant. And I'm here to give a qualified no to the project as it's currently set up. I mean, I agree with all the previous speakers. We need more housing. We need more art spaces. Absolutely. There's plenty of, you know, and it's a, having that kind of thing located near transit, great idea. My issue is the scale of this project, the height of it, is just massively out of proportion with the whole, with everything else that's in the neighborhood. I think the shade impacts, the block envy, I think, and just the feeling of yet another massive tower popping up in our city in a place that doesn't have anything close to that high at this point is really going to do a lot of damage to the whole, to the feel and the character and the quality of life of living in the neighborhoods. You know, that's part of what makes this such a great neighborhood. You know, there's already so much building going on in this neighborhood. There's, you know, I live up in the twenties, there's loads and loads of construction going on, and all of it is under, you know, is four, five, six, maybe eight stories. There's nothing, as I say, this thing is just way out of proportion to everything else that's in the neighborhood. And I think it's, you know, while I welcome, I think it's great that it'll provide low-market housing. I think it's great that it'll provide spaces for artists. I was a big fan of the City Centre Motel and a big fan of narrow space, love your bars. But this particular project, it just, the size of it is something that I oppose. That's what I have to say.
Okay, thanks Vince. Appreciate your comments. We'll move on to speaker number eight, Kirsten Larson. In person? Hi Kirsten, come on up to the podium. You have up to five minutes. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Kirsten Larson, and I'm an independent curator and artist advocate here in Vancouver. And I've been working in the arts and culture sector for about 12 years across all different areas, not-for-profit, for-profit, blue chip, and all the way into the underground. And I'm here today to speak on, yes, for the project because of what it's done for the community. I think it's shown a bright light onto the lack of spaces that we have in the city. And I'm born and raised in Vancouver, and I've watched firsthand our arts and culture scene crumble. We've lost hundreds of thousands of square feet in a short period of time, and I feel like we're finally getting to a point where we can start reclaiming some of that. So I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity for us to show up as a community and highlight what we really are at a time where I think it's very necessary. The space I have at the City Centre is called the Well Studios, and I just wanted to share a little bit about what we've managed to do there with the space that we've been given in a short period of time. Well Studios is an affordable space, and when I say affordable, it's not the kind of affordable that you would think. We charge $35 an hour for our space for the community to come in and try things out, whether it's dance, music. We have a men's group every week. We have an AA meeting. We're called the No-Tel Motel. And I've actually watched people come into those doors and get one to two years sobriety at the Well Studios. And that's just a little bit of what we've been able to do in a short period of time. And I would like to encourage developers in the city going forward that when you see empty spaces sitting around, that we are given first chance because we will make something beautiful. And I can tell you right now that what arts and culture does for a city is unquantifiable. You're not going to find it in a spreadsheet. But when you look around and see what it does for your community and your children and your children's children, that's where the value is. I don't really have much more to say other than thank you, and thanks.
Thank you, Kirsten. We'll go to speaker number nine, Louis Velagas. Yeah, while we get that pulled up for you, Louis, I'll just remind you, section 13.1 for the procedure by law does state that speakers need to keep their comments focused on the specific application. So I do allow some leeway, and I did so in your last presentation, but if we could stay on topic for this specific...
I am making an argument. You're aware of that.
I am, but we need to stay on topic to the specific...
Well, I'll do my best.
Thank you.
My name is Louis Velagas, as we just heard. I've been practicing as an urbanist in Vancouver and living here since 1985. Next slide, please. I am speaking against this tower in particular and towers in the neighborhoods in general because as an urban design professional, I know that towers destroy neighborhoods. The breakneck pace of house price inflation breaks families or stops them from forming in the first place. Next slide, please. Economists agree, the increase in the cost of houses and apartments is all in the land. Government is giving away seven to 30 times additional density and height to the development industry when it is clear that this policy is perpetuating the housing crisis, not reversing it. Next slide. It is a fallacy that increasing the housing stock will drive down prices. Built space is not the commodity that is in short supply. The commodity in short supply is land. And here, Mr. Counselor Montague, I'll have to talk about how to get to land. So that may be coming. So it would seem that the enemy is inside the chamber. When developers build 30 times more space on the parcel of land and the result is a foregone conclusion that it's going to be a tower, then what we're talking about is not good urbanism. Next. Here's proof. This is history. It cannot be unwritten or rewound. There is no going backwards. Change must look to the future. Yet in the future, with rapidly inflating land prices, 20% of units renting for 20% below market will secure zero affordability. Next. When housing costs double, families are caught in a vice. Money circulating in the neighborhood is cut off or cut in half. The backbone of employment in Canada, mom-and-pop shops and small businesses close. Jobs go begging. And the city is gutted as a lot of the tower revenues are actually reinvested globally rather than locally. Next, please. The sizes of dwelling spaces have had a way of slipping unnoticed from barely adequate to completely inadequate as economic and other pressures increase. Not just the poor, but even the well-to-do find themselves squeezed by high-rise speculative builders who shave six inches here and a foot there to lower costs and increase profits. Next. That's a quote from The Hidden Dimension by Edward T. Hall. Here are two more. An apartment which is barely adequate becomes uninhabitable at the exact moment that a rising apartment house next door cuts off its view. We heard from John in Mount Pleasant about this very point. Like the link between cancer and smoking, the cumulative effects of crowding are usually not experienced until the damage has been done. Next. The Broadway Plant diagram on the screen. Next slide, please. Ah, there we go. Encourages towers surrounding houses. It shows cumulative effects of crowding on the neighborhood space. It is the worst piece of planning I have ever seen in my entire professional career. Kudos to the artists and to the politicians who've commissioned them. Next slide, please. Clearly, cumulative effects of crowding are not understood in this room. Next. The right plan for Vancouver is obvious, reading from the top of the screen to the bottom. It's mountains, it's towers, and then it's human-scale neighborhoods. Could not be simpler. Yet the greed for land lift are unmaking what better hands and more gifted souls have made. Next. I indicate in this image with a red dotted line the approximate location of the footprint for... You went too far. There we go. Red dotted line, the footprint of the Broadway Plant fiasco. Clearly, this is a tower sprawl plan with unmitigated greed. Government's role is to regulate the markets, not gin them up. Next slide, please. The blue line are the condos, the orange are the houses, but we're not talking to those. The black are the Skytrain. We are talking about those, black with the white dots in them. Finally, here, the housing crisis graph is proof that Skytrain and Towers just keeps pushing house prices up and up and up.
I'm sorry, Louis, we are at time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll move on to speaker number 10, Connor Leveque. In person? Is Connor here? Not on the phone?
On the phone.
Hi, Connor, is that you?
Hi, can you hear me?
You'll have to turn off your laptop or phone, whatever you've got going on.
Are you able to hear me? I have to turn off your... And...
Connor, if that's you... Connor, if that's you, you have up to five minutes. Go ahead. We lost Connor? Okay, disconnected. We'll circle back. Caller number 11, Rebecca Garriger on the phone.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Rebecca. Go ahead. You have up to five minutes.
Okay, thanks so much. Hi, council. Thank you for your time. I'm speaking in support of this project. I actually lived in the area for well over 10 years and love being part of that community. When my family grew and we decided to have kids, we unfortunately outgrew our space and weren't able to find anything in the area and had to move outside of the city. This move took us away from the neighborhood that we loved so much, and we built such a community around us. The development proposed would add a lot more density and a lot of two- and three-bedroom units. I believe it's about 40% of the project. The Olympic Village is such a family-oriented neighborhood, and it would be building so closely connected, and the families around there would be benefiting from this, from having more families move into the area. This proposal would allow more families to stay, keeping connections with schools, jobs, and local businesses. I feel like it's a well-planned development, and it helps meet the demand in a community setting. This project is a positive step for the community, and it supports families, local businesses, and long-term sustainability in the neighborhood. And I hope that this project moves forward. Thanks so much for your time.
Great, thank you for calling, Rebecca. We'll go to caller number, yeah, caller number 12, Paul Sangera. Paul, you on the phone? Hi, Paul. Yeah, go ahead. You have up to five minutes.
Yeah, my name is Paul Sangera, and I'm an electrician living in Vancouver. I just wanted to share my thoughts with you tonight because of our housing situation. It affects me personally and many others in my age group. The lack of affordable housing has a huge impact on my life. I've been working full-time in my trade for 12 years, and despite having the steady income, I still have to live with my parents, not by... and despite having the steady income, I still have to live with my parents, not by my choice, but because finding an affordable place to rent is impossible. Living independently is a step forward in adulthood and it's also frustrating to feel stuck and not able to take that next step. If I ever want to be able to buy a place, the only way to do that is to live with my family and save enough money. I'm very lucky since my parents allowed me to do that. Aside from my personal situation, I think about my tradespeople in general and the fact that most of them can't afford to live in Vancouver. Young workers like me need housing close to job sites, especially in trades where we often are asked to travel. More rental housing benefits not only individuals but our economy as well, keeping skilled workers in the area and it also supports the local businesses. I support this application and more rental being built in general because of how important this is to people like me. Investing in rental housing isn't just about the shelter, it's about giving young people a chance to build their future. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Paul. Appreciate your comments. We'll move on to speaker thirteen, Helen Ahaou. Are you on the phone, Helen?
Hello?
Hi. Hopefully I pronounced your last name right. You have up to five minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. Okay. Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Helen and I'm a resident of Vancouver and I'm speaking in support of this application tonight. As a young professional, finding affordable and quality rental housing has been really challenging, not just for me but for my entire generation. I'm grateful to have a good job with a good income for my age, but rental housing prices and the limited availability means that many of us are forced into long commutes, cramped living situations, or even delaying major life milestones like starting a family, or we're even doubting whether we can ever afford to start one. I'm glad to see that Vancouver is prioritising building more rentals to keep up with demand, especially with many of us permanently priced out of buying a home. Young workers who drive economic growth should be able to afford to live near their jobs. They need housing stability and price stability. I hope that the amount of rental housing coming in the Broadway Plant area will mean significantly more options for many of us. Living in this location close to a number of transit lines would also allow us to live without a car, which can make life a little more affordable. Thank you so much for your time. Have a good night.
Great. Thanks, Helen. Speaker number fourteen, Spencer Goodman, on the phone. Not on the phone. Okay, we'll circle back to speaker number two, Louis Galvin.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hi, Louis. Go ahead. You have up to five minutes.
Hi. Yeah, thank you. Good evening. My name is Louis Galvin. I'm a Vancouver resident. I'm speaking in support of the proposal twenty-one eleven Main Street. I'm a renter in Vancouver and I want to talk about the importance of building more purpose-built rental housing and responsible landlords. I have been incredibly lucky to have the security of living in a purpose-built rental building in Vancouver and to have a great landlord. Who cares about their residents? I know how much my rent will increase every year. I know how I won't get evicted for any arbitrary reason. I know I can stay in my home and in my neighbourhood for the long term. That provides a lot of security for me in the long term. Vancouver is expensive. We all know that. Maybe back in the day, it was a certain type of people who rent and didn't own their own homes. But now everyone basically rents, so this is an issue for everyone, probably in generations of Vancouver residents. The city is doing the right thing, approving more rental housing, and this is a great location. Main and Sixth will be close to transit, really were connected. Downtown and Development here won't displace any existing residents. I hope that the council approve this application. Thank you for your time.
Good. Thanks for calling in, Louis. We'll circle back to number, speaker number ten, Connor Leveque. Are you on the phone, Connor? Not on the phone. Okay. Speaker number fourteen, Spencer Goodman. It's, sorry, clerk, no. Okay, this will be the third and final call for speakers. If there are any speakers of this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by the participant code one zero six one four four five pound before the close of the speakers list. That phone number will be posted on X and made available on the live stream. If there are any additional speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium. Seeing none, we'll take a five-minute recess for any additional speakers to call in or come forward.
Cool. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Okay. Um, speaker ten, Connor Leveque. You on the line?
Hey, thank you so much for your patience there. I'm a Freedom Mobile customer, so.
Go ahead. You have up to five minutes.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I'm a resident, well, not a resident, I'm an artist that has a studio at the City Centre Artist Lodge. I found throughout this meeting, I find it very heartening to hear that the developer is committing not just based in this building but in another building for arts and, but I think what's, you know, and I don't think there's anything you can say that would stop that. But what I do would like to share is like my own personal story and the stories of kind of the people that have been around the motel. So I run, it's called Club Soda Sober Events and Arts Collective. I've been in sobriety for about five years now. I'm a member of one of the recovery groups that takes place in the well, which Kirsten Larson, you just heard, operates. That recovery meeting started in my studio and it was just five or six of us every week and we eventually met Kirsten, who allowed us to rent the well for an unbelievable price. And like what was said before, one of the things that hasn't been mentioned in this is the, well, it hasn't been mentioned, but the impact of community and it's something that, you know, we can't, you're not going to be able to tear down the City Centre Motel, put up two towers and an artist space and bring back what we have happening right now. The relationships that have been built. Out of the well, I started Canada's first and only weekly alcohol-free comedy show. We have hosted a numerous amount of sober events. We have, the City Centre Motel has really become a place for people in recovery to actually land and become creative and it's become such a driving force of positivity in a city wrought with addiction, as we know. We have a lot of money going towards harm reduction. We don't have very much going towards recovery and saving people's lives after they choose to become sober. So the City Centre Motel has been the vestige of hope and of beauty and it's irreplaceable. And I think that there's, you know, in terms of housing, I think there's about five to six issues that Vancouver has to sort out before we put up two more towers. I've lived in the city for almost a decade now. I've heard the same argument that putting up more towers will lower the cost of living and that has not been my experience in ten years. And in fact, housing has only increased after every major development like this. So I don't hold out a lot of hope that this development will actually do anything for the normal Vancouverite. With that being said, I do want to also say again that I do really respect the fact that the arts are being taken into account as we move into this next development. And I want to put beforehand an extra special thank you to David Dupre as well at the Narrow Group and Nicola Wealth, who were kind of like the showrunners of this and, you know, let this happen. So thank you for my time. I really appreciate everybody's talking and everybody working tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Connor. Clerk, do we have any additional speakers on the line or in person? We're seeing no further speakers. The speakers list is now closed. And seeing that there are few or no public comments received after five PM, I'm now closing the receipt of public comments as well. Does the applicant have any closing comments?
No, we do not.
Okay, staff, do you have any closing comments?
Yes, thank you. We'd just like to make a clarification to councillor Farah's earlier question. I'm going to invite senior planner Alex up.
Yes, just a quick clarification. Sorry about that. Around the Class B industrial use for the space, there actually will be some restrictions because of the residential above. So some of the higher-impact uses we won't have. So we wouldn't actually have glassblowing or welding, which were my examples, apologies, in this space. But we'd certainly have it in a space like this in the flats, so the Prior Street space, for example. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Does council have any final questions to staff? Councillor Meisner, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I just want to follow up on a comment from, I think it was from Neil Wiles of Mount Pleasant BIA around Main and Sixth. He was mentioning there wasn't a traffic signal there. I'm just wondering if staff can speak to any transportation improvements that are planned in the area, specifically that intersection as a result of this development.
Yes, thank you very much for the question. Yes, as part of this application, the applicant will be required to put in new traffic, full traffic signal at Main and Sixth intersection. They'll also be upgrading the existing signal at Main and Fifth to include a better pedestrian signal there.
Okay, that's awesome news. Thanks very much.
Thanks, councillor. All right, councillor.
Yeah, actually, you know what? I had the exact same question as councillor Meisner, so I'm good. Thank you.
Councillor Kirby Young.
Yeah, I also did, so I'm happy seeing no other questions to the recommendations.
All right. Clerk, do we receive any additional public comments since the close of public comments? So council will now make its decision. I heard it was moved by councillor Kirby Young and seconded by councillor Meisner. Any discussion, council? And councillor Meisner, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I'm going to be supporting this project. I think that it is a great project and, you know, it's not every day that we have a project that comes before council where there's been this innovative use of the building that exists there currently at a time when it would otherwise probably sit empty and be boarded up or torn down and be a parking lot in the interim. So I really want to give kudos to Nicola Wealth and David Dupre for coming together to create these amazing artist studios. And I've been to a few events there in the parking lot over the past few years for Mural Festival and it was really interesting tonight to hear from some of the users of that space over the past few years that were using it for artist space but also for, you know, things like recovery and AA meetings and all sorts of things that I didn't expect to be happening there. So I think it's really wonderful and I hope that we can expand that model across the city for development sites. But as for the project, it's a significant number of rental units. It's very close to the new Broadway subway line. It has twenty percent below market. I really like the fifty-eight hundred square foot cultural amenity space that really, you know, is a connection to the use in the past few years as artist studios. And I like the design and the muse and the courtyard and it's creative. It's not a boring, you know, project. It has the old sign incorporated into it. I think it is a good representation of Mount Pleasant and the uniqueness of the neighbourhood, so I'm really excited to support it tonight. Thanks.
Great. Thanks, councillor Meisner. Councillor Kirby Young.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Echoing similar comments. I have attended, as I know, a number of individuals have the Mural Festival events, which had used this for the last few years to activate. And it was a fantastic use of public space, not just for the artist studios year-round, but really activating it during the festival itself and became a real hub. So I do want to also acknowledge Nicola Wealth for their creative use of the space and as well as David Dupre for working and activating that. I would love to see more of that happening in the city versus sites sitting kind of stagnant, if you will, while they're awaiting development. I think that this is a really great model for, hopefully, that will inspire others and this may be something that council can take away and see how we can encourage more of that. But it is an incredible, significant amount of housing. Four hundred and forty-six rental units in a city with a vacancy rate as low as ours is incredibly important. And that's with the twenty percent below-market rental, about ninety of them. So pretty significant impact there. I also wanted to acknowledge. 90 of them. So, pretty significant, um, impact there. Um, I also wanted to acknowledge that, um, through the additional, um, FSR, I think staff had advised 8.5 would have been the normal allowance and with the additional 1.5 is about 10. That, uh, it's, we don't see a lot of rental projects that also, um, generate, uh, community amenity. Um, or in addition to the DCLs, we see the utilities DCLs which are payable and typically there isn't enough, um, because of the longer, the cost of delivering the housing and the longer payback rental housing to generate that. And so to have the cultural amenities space as well, um, I'm very appreciative of and I'm looking forward to seeing that. I appreciate the clarification on the glass, I was wondering about that. My understanding had been that typically, um, that's not, um, that sort of full Class B is not as, um, enabled, as close to residential uses, so glad to hear that. Uh, but hopefully, um, as these projects come forward, uh, this can really create a model, um, and be the preferred, if I can say that, um, option for community amenities. It's coming in the form of cultural amenities because I think it really recognizes the history of Mount Pleasant um, and the high concentration of artists that we have in this area. And, um, there's a, a number of organisations that are located there that are going to be subject to redevelopment because it was formerly industrial, it lent itself to the artist practice. Uh, they're typically portable buildings, um, and they have sort of the loading and, and the ability to do production space there. So, I think that's something for council to really take away and hopefully staff are hearing that as well. Um, I'd like to see a prioritization on it when we can achieve the community amenities, that it be on artist spaces in this area because there's certainly a nucleus here, um, and a community and a hub. But I will support it. I appreciate all the work on it. Um, and I appreciate all the speakers that came out and support. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Kirby Young. Um, just a reminder to any council member who's participating virtually, uh, whose video is disabled, they will be marked absent, uh, for the vote pursuant to section 14.13 of the Procedure Bylaw. And I'm now going to call vote. Uh, clerks, if you can take us to a voting screen and council, please raise your vote on the voting panel. And, uh, that passes with no one in opposition. Thank you. Move on to, uh, item number three, CD1 rezoning 1045 West 14th Avenue. Before we begin the agenda, uh, if anyone believes they have a conflict of interest, now is the time to declare it. So, does anyone have a conflict to disclose? Uh, Counsel Kirby Young, I'm assuming that's holdover?
Yep, Chair, that is a holdover.
Yep, uh, seeing no one on the queue, uh, the clerk will now read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by Bajes Architecture to rezonate 1045 West 14th Avenue from Residential District to Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of a 20-storey residential building and 202 rental units, of which 20% of the residential forced area would be low-market rental units. A floor space ratio of 5.95 and a height of 60.4 metre with additional height for rooftop amenity space are proposed. The General Manager of Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set on the summary and recommendation. The following correspondence has been received since we refer to public hearing. Three pieces of support, nine pieces in opposition, and one piece dealing with other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to 5:00 PM today.
Great, thanks. This will be the first call for speakers. Any speakers, uh, for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by the participant code 1061445Pound before the close of the speakers list. That phone number will be posted on X and made available on the live stream. There will be opportunities for new speakers and missed speakers to be added to the end of the registered speakers list. Uh, we do have staff from Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability here to present the application.
Thank you. Good evening, council. My name's Carly Rosenblatt and I'm the rezoning planner for this application, which proposes to rezone a site at 1045 West 14th Avenue under the Broadway Plan. The subject site shown in red is made up of one lot located mid-block on the north side of West 14th Avenue and developed with a three-story residential building. The site and surrounding area is owned to RM3 Residential. The site is approximately 25,000 square feet with a frontage of 200 feet along West 14th Avenue and a depth of 125 feet. The property contains existing residential uses, including 50 rental housing units with 43 tenancies eligible under the city's tenant relocation and protection policy for the Broadway Plan. The Broadway Plan is a 30-year plan focused on opportunities to integrate new housing, jobs and amenities around the new Broadway subway. This site, represented with a star on the map, is located within the Fairview South Area B sub-area of the plan, which allows for consideration of rezoning for a rental building with 20% of the residential floor area for below-market rental units. A tower site may be considered with a maximum density of 6.5 FSR and a height of up to 20 stories. The application was submitted on January 5th, 2024. It proposes 202 secured rental units with 20% of the floor area for below-market rental units. The building height is for a 20-story building with a maximum height of 198 feet and additional height for a rooftop amenity space. Underground parking is provided with access off of the rear lane. This table shows starting rents as well as the average annual household incomes they serve in Vancouver's west side. Starting rents for the below-market units are to be discounted 20% below citywide average rents and these rents would be secured through a housing agreement prohibiting the stratification of units. A virtual question and answer period was held from April 3rd to 16th in 2024 and a total of 107 submissions were received. Support was expressed for this project as it proposes a height and density considered appropriate for the location and housing along transit routes. Respondents also noted an appreciation for the design of the building. Other respondents expressed concerns related to the height of the building and the shadows it will cast. Folks expressed concern that the existing tenants will be displaced into an unaffordable rental market. And there was also concern the development will increase congestion in the neighbourhood and create difficulties accessing parking. In response to these concerns, staff note the proposed height of 20 stories does align within, with the Broadway Plan. An analysis of the shadow performance shows there are no new shadow impacts on parks and public schoolyards from the spring to fall equinoxes between 10:00 AM and 4:00 PM as recommended in the plan. The plan does include enhanced tenant protections for eligible tenants, which includes a choice of financial compensation based on the length of tenancy or a temporary rent top-up to mitigate rent increases while waiting to return to the new building. Assistance from the applicant to find alternative accommodations if requested and there's also the right of first refusal to return to the new building at either 20% below the citywide average rents by unit type or the tenant's current rent, whichever is less. The application is required to comply with the Parking Bylaw and it's also in close proximity to frequent transit networks and located on the West 14th Avenue bikeway. The application is contributing 20% of the residential floor area as below-market rental and there's also a contribution of approximately $294,000 in public art. In summary, staff recommend approval of this application at 1045 West 14th Avenue from RM3 to CD1, subject to conditions outlined in Appendix B. The proposal meets the intent of the Broadway Plan and advances the city's rental housing targets. If approved, the application would contribute 202 secured rental units with 20% of the residential floor area for below-market units. This concludes my presentation and both staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
Great, thank you. Would the applicant team like to, uh, present? Is the applicant team online or?
They are online.
I'm online here. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, good evening, Deputy Mayor and Council. Um, my name is Dirk Buttrus. I'm the architect. Um, and we have our, uh, project team here, the applicant team, Gary Oshizawa, who is my senior associate, project architect, Amber Paul is, uh, from Bearmark Design, our landscape architect, Darcy Wise represents, uh, uh, Wall Financial Corporation and James Todd, the project manager for Somerville Community Relations regarding tenant relocation and, uh, repositioning. So, I, I don't have a presentation, but we are here, all of us, to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you. Uh, are there any questions from council, the staff, the applicant team, noting that this is the only opportunity for council to ask questions of the applicant? Seeing nobody in the queue, I'll make the second call for speakers. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445Pound before the close of the speakers list. That phone number will be posted on X and made available on the live stream. And we'll now hear from, uh, the public. Any registered speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium when your name is called. Uh, speaker number one, C Stein, in person? No. Okay, speaker number two, Lewis Legas. Yep, we'll get that presentation up for you. Hey, you have up to five minutes.
My name is Lewis Legas. I have practised urbanism in Vancouver since 1985 and I've been a resident here just as long. Next slide, please. Oh, you got it up already, great. No, go back. Every tower approved by council perpetuates the housing crisis, placing our democracy on the edge and speaking against this tower and all towers in the neighbourhoods because I have seen towers destroy democracy. Next slide. Economists agree that the increase in the cost of housing is all in the land. I have explained today already what this means and how council policy is perpetuating this injury against its own people. Next slide, please. Finally, I present to you a strategy for ending the housing crisis. One, introduce a tower moratorium in the Broadway Plan area. Two, build gap in sufficient quantity to meet or exceed demand. And three, build LRT streetcar instead of the Skytrain. Next slide, please. What is GAP? Guaranteed Affordable Housing in Perpetuity. The 20% below-market policy gets the first and the last word right. 20% is guaranteed in perpetuity, yet it makes a mockery of the other two words, affordable housing. Next slide. Where does GAP build or belong in Vancouver? In the neighbourhoods within 12-minute walking distance of LRT streetcar stops. GAP infills at densities that pencil out at eight units per acre with minimum disruption to the people's lives in the neighbourhood. Infill height is four stories or less. In other words, it's human scale. Next slide, please. For this tower, we need to only concern ourselves with the neighbourhood column in the GAP matrix on the left. Reading from the bottom, without building towers, we can house 11,000 souls in 5,028 infill units as a, at a density of eight units per acre or 5,000 units built over 630 acres instead of maybe 5,000 units built in 10 towers. Whereas a tower is in the face of the neighbours, GAP infill is barely noticeable. Next slide, please. What does good urbanism look and feel like? It looks and feels like the stuff that we already know and love. Houses, row houses, courtyard houses. No towers, no hallways, no exit stairs. Every unit has its own front door on the street, on the courtyard, the lane, or yes, even a village square. Next slide, please. Again, this tower, for this tower, the focus should be on the neighbourhood column in the, uh, chart. Ending the houses, housing crisis will require a trans-regional approach knitted together by four new LRT lines shown on the right. The Broadway Plan tries to go it alone. That's doomed to fail, but it will not require building towers. The takeaway here is that we can house 3.25 million people behind GAP doors supported by building four lines of LRT in order to access crown land. Next slide, please. Or we can allow the government to keep doing it to us over and over again. Next slide, please. Using land use to profit their political masters, claiming they are bringing more revenues to the city even as they waive DCCs and CACs and throwing away all other kinds of benefits. Governments think, uh, sorry, and to throw any other benefit they can think of to the advantage of the tower industry as they destroy the Canadian dream by selling it to the highest bidder. Those are the values of government today.
Sorry, go ahead.
Chair. Yeah, I have a point of procedure. It's Counsel Kirby Young. Can you remind the speaker to not impugn the motives of council and just focus on the merits or non-merits of the application? I'm getting a little tired of suggesting that we're serving political masters and profiteering.
Yep, thank you, Counsel, uh, Kirby Young. I was just about to jump in and say something else. I'm going to remind speakers, uh, that, uh, members of the public are expected to avoid improper conduct. That includes, uh, statements that are defamatory. That's outlined in, within the Procedure Bylaw. So, things like government masters, uh, unacceptable. We will not tolerate it and, uh, if it continues, we just-
Imagine how the rest of us feel. Next slide, please.
I'm sorry?
I said, imagine how the rest of us feel.
Okay.
I think it's time to terminate the speaker. Thank you.
Yeah, all right.
But otherwise, I'm going to exit the proceeding. Just to be clear. Thank you.
At this point, we'll, uh, that's the end of our speakers list, so we'll make a third and final call for speakers. If, uh, there are any speakers for, who wish to speak to this item, uh, they can call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445Pound before this close of the speakers list. The phone number will be posted on X and made available on the live stream. If there are any additional speakers in council chambers, please come forward to the podium. Not seeing anybody, so we'll take a five-minute recess for any additional speakers to call or come forward. or come forward. Two, three.
Chair, are you able to confirm? Do we have just six now?
Uh, no, we still have seven until the final item.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, and we have quorum now, so we will continue. Clerk, do we have any additional speakers on the line or in person? Oh, okay, speaker number one is on the line, C Stein. Are you there?
Yeah.
Go ahead. You have up to five minutes.
Well, hi. Thank you very much. Good evening, council. I don't have too much to say, except specifically with this building, my understanding is that Somerville's involved, and I believe that's the Diamond family. In regard to that, I just want to say something about the tenants. And it has to do with all Broadway Plan. It seems Somerville's buying up a lot of these developing. I just want council to keep in mind that hopefully the tenants end up getting the same square footage as they left, the same footprint as they come back to, because it's very important. Space is very valuable in a sense of security, happiness, and whatnot. And I just don't want to see people from a one-bedroom squeezed into what would be considered a studio right now. I think we can't lose that valuable space. And I just want to say that if Diamond and Billionaires are going to be building these, they can certainly afford to make available the same footprint for tenants. And that's all I need to say. So thank you very much for taking my call, and I appreciate it. By the way, and I think 211-211-9 is going to be fabulous. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Clerk, anybody else on the line? Yep, seeing no further speakers, the speakers list is now closed. And seeing there are few or no public comments received after 5:00 PM, I'm now closing the receipt of public comments. Does the applicant have any closing comments at all?
Uh, thank you. I took the five-minute break to jot down a few thoughts.
Go ahead.
Council approved the Broadway Plan, which established guidelines for density and the provision of rental housing. We worked closely with city staff to arrive at an application that meets all the tests and challenges for rezoning this site. In our opinion, this proposal responds to all the requirements needed for approval. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does staff have any closing comments?
Hi, no, we don't have any closing comments. Thank you.
Counsel, do you have any questions for staff? Seeing, oh, Counselor Meisner, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to respond, or actually ask a question around the last comment from the caller about someone in a one-bedroom going down to his studio. Can staff comment on that in terms of TRP?
Hi there, yes, I'm Al here with the housing regulation team. Yes, so the TRP policy requires tenants to be offered a unit based on their household size per National Occupancy Standard. So typically, someone who's currently a single, who's in a one-bedroom currently, should be offered a one-bedroom or the choice of a studio if they want to pay less rent. But it should be given both options.
Okay, so they'll get both options, and the studio would be less if they wanted to choose that. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. I appreciate it. It's important detail. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Clerk, did we receive any additional public comments since the close of public comments? Uh, council will now make its decision on this application. Do we have a mover? Moved by Counselor Meisner, second.
Second.
Second by Counselor Joe. Counselors, any discussion? Seeing nobody on the queue, I'm going to remind council that if you're participating virtually, if your video is disabled, you will be marked absent for the vote pursuant to Section 14.13 of the procedure bylaw. And I'm now going to call a vote. Clerk, if you can take us to a voting screen. Council, please register your vote. And clerk, I seem to be hunted out of my screen. If I can get a vote assistant favor, please. All right, and with that, that passes with no one in opposition. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you all.
We'll move on to item number four, CD1 rezoning 648 to 680 East Broadway and 2505 Fraser Street. Before we begin the agenda, if anyone believes they have a conflict of interest, now is the time to declare it. And does anyone have a conflict to disclose? Seeing nobody in the queue, clerk will now read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by War Financial Corporation to rezon 648 to 680 East Broadway and 2505 Fraser Street, Commercial District to Comprehensive Development District, to permit the development of a 16-story mixed-use building with 137 strata residential units, of which 20% of the residential force area for social housing. Deliver turnkey to the city and commercial space on the ground floor. Floor space ratio 6.0 and a height of 59 meter, with additional height for rooftop amenity space are proposed. General Manager of Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability recommends approval, subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation. The following correspondence has been received since we first had a public hearing: two pieces of support, four pieces in opposition, and one piece dealing with other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to 5:00 PM today.
Okay, thank you. This will be the first call for speakers. Any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound. Before the close of the speakers list, that phone number will be posted on X and made available on the live stream. There will be an opportunity for new speakers and missed speakers to be added to the end of the registered speakers list. List, we do have staff from Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability here to present the application. Go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you, Deputy Mayor and Council. My name is Leifke Visserz, and I'm the rezoning planner for this application, being considered under the Broadway Plan. The site is located in red at the southeast corner of East Broadway and Fraser Street. It contains rental and commercial. Residential tenants are eligible for tenant protection under the enhanced tenant relocation and protection policy for the plan area. And if eligible, tenants will be offered the first right of refusal for non-market subsidized social housing units in the new building. For the existing businesses currently located on the site, the applicant has engaged a relocation consultant as well to support them. The site is well-served by transit with major bus service, Skytrains, and bike routes. Several parks, public schools, childcare, and community spaces are located nearby. From a policy context, the site is located on the Mount Pleasant center area of the plan, which permits up to 18-story rental or strata buildings and up to six FSR. For strata, 20% of the floor area is to be delivered as turnkey social housing to the city. Ground floor retail or service use is required. The application was submitted in March of 2024. For a 16-story mixed-use residential building with 137 strata residential units, and 20% of the floor area or residential floor area is to be delivered as social housing turnkey to the city. The site will also provide retail space and public open space. The density proposed is 6.0 FSR as per the plan. This table compares non-market and below-market, as well as average rents by unit types, and the average annual household incomes that they serve. A virtual Q&amp;A period was held with 119 pieces of correspondence received. Comments of support were for the proposed housing, particularly as social housing units. Folks appreciated the location and proximity to transit, supported the density, and supported the new and existing businesses in the area. Concerns were related to displacement of existing businesses, as well as tenants. There were also concerns that future transit options may not be able to handle the increased traffic. In response to these public comments regarding the displacement of businesses, the applicant's commercial tenant relocation consultant has engaged businesses and is working with them. Regarding neighborhood fit, the plan supports new development in close proximity to transit, shopping, services, and amenities. And finally, with respect to transportation, the site is near two arterials and well-served by other transit options, including Skytrain. In terms of public benefits, the total contribution includes 20% social housing, valued at approximately $1.9 or $19 million, and approximately $3.6 million in DCLs. In conclusion, the proposal aligns with the Broadway Plan, delivering 20% of the floor area as social housing delivered turnkey to the city. Staff recommend approval, subject to conditions outlined in Appendix B of the report. Staff and the applicant team are available to answer questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Would the applicant team like to make a presentation at all?
Good evening. My name is Doug Nelson. I'm a partner at Bingham Hill Architects. We have no presentation this evening, but if there are any questions for the applicant team, we do have a number of representatives here or listening in to assist.
Okay, great, thank you. Are there any questions from council to staff or the applicant team? Noting that this is the only opportunity for council to ask questions of the applicant. Counselor Frye, go ahead.
Yeah, and this is really a bit tangential, but I know that there's some businesses at this location that had expressed some concern. I know, for instance, Pizza Barberella and the Cattero Cafe are both going to be displaced. And of course, we don't have tenant protections for retail. But I'm just curious if there's been conversations with some of these retail stores and, you know, even potentially the option for them to relocate in the new CRUs or if anything like that's gone on.
Thank you, counselor. Is that a question for staff or for the applicant team?
Uh, maybe both.
I'm happy to answer, actually. So we have engaged with the applicant team on this, and while there is no requirement citywide for them to hire a specialist for relocating commercial tenants, this applicant has opted to do so on their own right. Their tenant relocation specialist is working with the tenants to try to help them find temporary or permanent locations. They've also offered tenants the opportunity to return if the new space does work for those tenants. Further to that, Pizzeria Barbara closed in the past weeks, and their Instagram post did cite financial considerations. I don't believe it cited reference to this particular project, but I can't speak for them. And I can't speak to the other tenants specifically, but having reviewed the notes from the tenant relocation or the commercial location specialist, they are working with those tenants.
That's amazing. I know that the Cattero Cafe is a very unique business model where people can go and play with cats. And so relocating that is a challenge, and I appreciate that there is an overture to help them. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Frye. This will be the second, seeing no else on the queue, this will be the second call for speakers. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to contact council, speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound before the close of the speakers list. That phone number will be posted on X and made available on the live stream. So we'll now hear from the public. Any registered speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium when your name is called. And we'll start with speaker number one, Adrian Southen. Adrian, go ahead. You have up to five minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, counselors, and good evening. My name is Adrian Southen. I'm a resident of Vancouver, and I'm here in strong opposition to this rezoning application. This development would result in the eviction of five businesses and numerous residents. Already, this part of Mount Pleasant is becoming empty. Within one block, there are five commercial units available for lease, representing over 16,000 square feet that is vacant. Within two blocks, 11 units for lease with over 23,000. There's an additional eight commercial units coming in at St. George, four of which are still not leased, bringing the total up within three blocks to 30,000 vacant square feet. These are new buildings. All but two of these vacancies are in developments for the past 12 years. Most of these units, such as the former site of NADA, have been vacant for years. 612, 618 East Broadway, meanwhile, were vacant for four years before finally being leased in 2023. That's four years without business fees and tax revenue for the city and province. Given the numerous existing vacancies in this area, there's no reason to believe that the new commercial units would take any less time to be leased. In financial terms, this has lost money for our city and our community. I was able to speak to three of the five businesses who would be forced out of their locations. Each are small, family-owned businesses. All of them said that they love Mount Pleasant. They want to stay in this neighborhood, but they don't know if they can. And I will take a brief sidebar from my notes to say those who I spoke to had not been reached out, so I'd like to refute the statement that they had been reached out to by a relocation consultant, because those who I spoke to had never, had not heard from anyone. All three believed that they could not find a location at the same rent price, and none were certain that their business could survive moving, with one owner anticipating over $800,000 in relocation costs. The simple fact is that many small businesses cannot survive relocation. Businesses like these are a vital part of Mount Pleasant, nor is the embodiment of the neighborhood cornerstone of our collective nostalgia, a gathering place where you can always find your late-night craving, a last-minute pickup of that one ingredient you always forget, or the crispiest falafel and fries in Vancouver. Cattero Cat Cafe has found homes for over 1,500 rescued cats. And as in all ages spaces, I've seen them host groups of children as well as seniors from assisted-living facilities, providing vital exposure to these animals in what is scientifically proven to improve mental health, development, and longevity. Meanwhile, when I had contractors in my home last year, they were so excited because our building was right next to Classic NSL, the only place they said they can get Filipino food in this city that actually tastes like home. It is a true mom-and-pop restaurant. The owners couldn't even make it out tonight because the operation is just them and their son, and they couldn't miss their busiest day, their busiest hours. Commercial picture framing has already been forced to move once by rezoning. This would be a second time, if not more. I did not have a chance to speak to the owner. These businesses personify Mount Pleasant and the best of Vancouver. Mount Pleasant is helpful, it is friendly, and the people here stick up for each other. But they cannot survive if they're forced from the locations, and without them, this neighborhood is at risk of disappearing. This does not even begin to touch on the numerous apartments and above these businesses. Many would be forced from their community and perhaps even Vancouver, facing substantial rent increases even with the minimal, the bare minimum of below-market rental units. Vancouver has become notorious as a cold, unaffordable, and unwelcoming city. Studies from the Vancouver Foundation have found that one quarter of residents feel alone and isolated. Where the butt of jokes, towns like Prince George and Regina have entire marketing campaigns centered around that fact. have entire marketing campaigns centred around that fact. So why take away the businesses that provide that community? Much of this council was elected on a pro-business platform and have roots as business owners. I politely but firmly ask that you support these local businesses and vote no on this proposal. Instead, the city should prioritise rezoning the existing vacant buildings and lots in this neighbourhood, such as 635 East Broadway, which has been empty for at least 15 years and has become a magnet for graffiti. I also request that the city consider offering grants to small businesses that are being displaced by such proposals or create requirements for developers. This proposal means loss, loss of our neighbours, loss of businesses, and income for the city and loss of community. Thank you so much for your time.
Right on time. Thank you for sharing your thoughts. We'll move to speaker number two, Lewis Philakis. And Lewis, while our staff are pulling up your presentation, I'm going to remind you to avoid defamatory comments, so please moderate your language accordingly.
Yeah, there's never been any intention for me to be defamatory.
Okay.
There's every intention for me to be critical by citing measurable and observable facts.
Just asking you to moderate your...
But I wrote five presentations, maybe a word slipped out.
Make sure it's not defamatory. Okay, thank you.
I appreciate you indulging me. This is the presentation that I sent from council chambers.
Yes, they did get it, they're just pulling...
Did they get it? Okay.
Go ahead, you have up to...
So I am Lewis Philakis. I have practised urbanism in Vancouver since 1985 and been resident at that time. The mere appearance of quid pro quo between government and industry puts democracy on a knife-edge. Next slide. I am speaking against this one-size-fits-all solution, because as we have shown, every tower approved in the neighbourhood perpetuates the housing crisis. Next, please. To end the housing crisis, government must, one, build GAP, and, two, add land. GAP is guaranteed affordable houses in perpetuity. You can read about it on the CMHC website. Government adds land by building LRT, but not Skytrain. Next slide, please. The problem with Skytrain is that it is a loop. Skytrain is people mover technology trying to be adapted to transit. The loop at its largest dimension is only 8.5 miles long, and the little tails that spin off from the loop are not much longer, preventing people from accessing cheap land for affordable houses. Skytrain has built just 80 kilometres over 40 years because it is so damn expensive. A rate of two kilometres per year is insufficient to put downward pressure on house prices. Next. Adding insult to injury, today the Skytrain loop is full. That means that every Broadway tunnel train will have to queue before it can enter the loop. Crazy, right? Next slide. Of course, this is even crazier. The chart shows Skytrain construction against the housing crisis. Houses in blue, we're not talking about those. Condos in orange, we are talking about those. And affordability in the dotted green line at the bottom, we are talking about that. And the Skytrain in the black bars with the white dots. It shows that Skytrain has had no effect on moderating prices, and I've just presented evidence on how actually Skytrain drives up house prices by limiting people's ability to access cheap land. Next, please. Thus, the correct government response to housing demand is to increase land supply. Adding density and height is simply addressing the wrong commodity. So how do we add land? Next slide. We build LRT, because it is 12 times cheaper than building Skytrain in Vancouver, because it can go 200 kilometres where the Skytrain range is 80 kilometres, and for other reasons on the slide that I'm not going to get into. Next slide, please. There are four LRT lines that are fairly obvious, and they go in all kinds of direction. Next slide, please. There is a blue line, which is really the old interurban, cuts right through the heart of Vancouver and on the Arbutus Ride of Way. There is a Canada Line extension that could ride on a proposed Burrard Street tunnel all the way to Whistler, giving a one-seat ride from Vancouver International Airport to the ski slopes. Next, please. Or how about an LRT connecting... Oh, you're slow. Well, yeah, there we go. Connecting SFU and UBC, riding a historic Fourth Avenue, riding as a tram on the Granville Street Mall you're trying to revitalise, and riding on Hastings all the way to SFU. Next slide. And a North Shore line that I won't get into because it's really outside of our area. But when you look at it all combined, next slide, please, you see that the whole thing is just completely different conception of how to access land and cheap housing than building towers and Skytrain. Next slide, please. And coincidentally, they all meet right downtown. So this is a huge bonus for our city. Next slide, please. The line on the bottom is the one that concerns this tower. Restricted mobility is also generating land lift. So if land lift is the increase in the value of land, if people can't get out of the Skytrain periphery or the Broadway line that is running through the centre of this Broadway plan, then they're competing for the same piece of land or the same condo, and that's just simply driving price up. And this is basic economics. Next slide, please. Even at 50% build-out, an LRT system or network would provide about 4.5 million housing for 4.5 million, which is about the population of the province. Next slide, please. In Vancouver, we just need to look at the neighbourhood numbers, and I'm not going to really worry too much about this because last time people objected to it. But if you look on the right side...
And I'm sorry, Lewis, we are at time.
Good stuff. Thank you.
Speaker number three, Kana Ing, in person. Kana, go ahead. You have up to five minutes.
Hi, my name is Kana Ing. I was raised in Mount Pleasant. In fact, I even went to the Mount Pleasant Elementary School. And Mount Pleasant is a neighbourhood in the stolen, unceded land of the Coast Sealas Territories. I would like everyone to remember that. I stand here to speak against this rezoning that threatens the very heart of our community. Growing up in Mount Pleasant, or what I would like to call it now as "Melt Privileged", my friends and family were low-income working class, were also immigrants. And yet, we were able to afford to make Mount Pleasant home and raise our families. It was a dream. It was a place that... It was a place where this dream of stability wasn't a distant home. It was within reach even for the working poor. But over time, with the gentrification of Main Street and Broadway, that dream is slipping further and further away. The prices have risen so high that people who built this community, who made this place what it is, are being pushed out. We are in a housing crisis, and yet we're not acting like it. There are over 4,000 unhoused people in Vancouver, and that number grows by 7.7% each year, and this motion will make it worse. I struggle to speak in the required decorum that is demanded by this council when this proposal lacks it. We need to protect the already affordable homes that are very limited in Mount Pleasant, not displace our low-income neighbours. The proposed 20% of social housing, aka 27 units, which is a joke, is insufficient for the people who will be displaced, and definitely not sufficient to cause even a small dent in this housing crisis that this council recently contributed to by halting the construction of the new supportive housing. If we're going to build new developments, this city council must demand more from the developers. They must place conditions that guarantee that the majority, not 20%, of these unions are affordable, affordable at welfare rates and at minimum wage rates. This city must demand purpose-built housings for the vulnerable, not high raises for the rich. This city must fight against gentrification, not displace communities apart. I know it's been a long day, but I look at every one of you or the people who are here and challenge you to leave a legacy in resolving the housing crisis, to build, to not just build homes, but to build affordable and accessible homes for everybody. Unless the city council stands up for the people, the developer will profit and price out the poor. I'm exhausted, but I hope you all have a warm home to return to.
Okay, thank you, Kana. Our fourth speaker is Sorab... Sor... Sorry. Sororba... Sorob Mohammed Nadir. Sorry about that.
You got it right.
I eventually got it right, I think.
Yes. Good evening, everybody. I'm speaking on behalf of Nur Convenience Store. I'm the manager and also the son of one of the owners. And I'm speaking on behalf of everybody. So Nur Convenience Store have been operating since 2012, and we were actually playing a big role in that area as a convenience store and a community corner store, which is... We brought a lot of... We were friendly for all the community neighbourhood, and we actually cleaned up the area as well a lot. And honestly, once the rezoning application were published, our name was not even mentioned on the rezoning application. So all I'm asking is that please pay more attention for all the tenants that are there and see if you guys can help us on relocating onto a new place or provide us with some sort of deals and some sort of help, please. Because honestly speaking, in that Nur Convenience Store, that store is... We're renting the big portion of that area. And honestly, 11, 12 families are feeding from it as well. And we need some help on all of those. Otherwise, like, if we lock those doors, like, what are the people going to do that are working there right now? So all I'm asking is just please pay a little bit more attention on us and give us some sort of help on relocating or at least provide us some sort of earlier date so we can find a new place and move into a new place. And if we can get any help, that would be amazing in that area. Well, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much. It was my first time speaking in such a crowd. I'm sorry, I'm kind of shaking. But thank you. All I'm asking is just like a little bit more help on those tenants that are renting that area. And yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Sorob. And maybe during the break, staff might be able to reach out and chat with you. This is the third and final call for speakers. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 before the close of the speakers list. That phone number will be posted on X and made available on the live stream. If there are any additional speakers in council chambers, please come forward to the podium. Stephen Bohas, go ahead. You have up to five minutes.
Okay, thank you councillor. My name's Stephen Bohas. I live in Vancouver. And I am speaking neither in favour or in opposition to this rezoning. I think there are some positive and negative aspects to this proposal, and I'd like to comment on a few of the items for your consideration. Firstly, it's very positive to see new social housing units deliver turnkey to the city in this proposal. I do support that. And perhaps with the inclusion of some of the great commercial space, it could actually have a new supportive housing there on site. I'm against the idea of having a separate entrance for the rich condo dwellers and for the poor residents. These are sometimes called "poor doors", and I think this is a very regressive step in the city. And it's not the Vancouver that I know. We have already seen the loss of small businesses at the site. Pizza Barberella closed its doors on March 2nd. I was actually there and had one last pizza on March 1st. It was excellent. I spoke to the people who were working there, and they simply closed because they didn't have the means to relocate. They threw in the towel. They tried for so long, but it was the rezoning that kicked it off. I also spoke to Cattero Cafe's owners, and they will try to stick it out and find a new space. But I will echo what the previous speaker said, that the city has its means and has commercial units for rent, and really you should look at a way of stepping in and filling the void there, because it's within the city's means and you have the space. Now, finally, I want to address the recommendations by staff regarding the fate of the renters, as I'm a renter myself. So the staff report that says that there are 17 rental units, and I actually knew a tenant who used to live there. And in order to return, according to the TRPP, which was just changed on February 28th, all tenants would have to meet strict income requirements to come back to the social housing units because most of the units are going to be condo. So there's no option for them to return to the condos. And the only rentals that they can return to would be the social housing units. However, if they're making too much money just like above those rates, they can't return. They'll be demovicted. And I think there's like fundamentally something wrong with that picture when it's the city who is taking those 20% of those units as turnkey social housing. There's got to be a better solution here. So I'll suggest something there. And let's just remember that homeless lists can lead to premature death, and a recent coroner report said that 450 homeless people died in BC in 2023 just by being on the streets. So what can we do about people who can't return, who would otherwise qualify, let's see, on the previous applications to return as renters? So one thing you could do is look at the city-owned properties in the area. The Mount Pleasant Community Centre has a tower there at 7th and Main. That's city-owned rental space. Would it not be possible to allow all of the renters who live there to have space in nearby city properties, like at the Mount Pleasant Community Centre, for the same rents with a like-for-like replacement? After all, they might be getting demovicted if they don't meet those minimum thresholds for income or maximum thresholds for income. And at a previous council meeting, I'll just mention, a long time ago, across the street, there is an eight-story building. It used to be 11 stories. And that council, they changed the building. They lowered it because they listened to the residents in the area, and they did something. So maybe this council can do something for the tenants who stand to be displaced from their rental units and who will not be able to return to social housing because they do not meet the eligibility by housing them in the city's own rental properties. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Stephen. Seeing nobody else come into the podium, I will now take a five-minute recess for any additional speakers to call in or come forward. Hammer's back on so we can get quorum. Okay, we do have a caller, Anna Van Egan. Are you on the line?
Hello, yes, I'm here.
Go ahead, you have up to five minutes.
Hello, first off, I'd like to say thank you to the deputy mayor and councillors. My name is Anna Van Egan and I'm one of the owners of Ketero Cat Cafe. We are a beloved local business and a community hub that has been serving East Vancouver since 2019. First off, I would like to say I appreciate the need for more rental housing in Vancouver. And I understand the need for urban development in progress. And I also want to say thank you to the Wall Corporation for going out of their way to engage a relocation specialist for the businesses that are affected by this development application. However, for our business in particular, this is not enough. This development project is set to remove a vibrant community that has been fostered by the small businesses that are included in this development application. The current development application allows for only two new retail spaces, which will not accommodate all of the businesses that are currently operating in the same square footage. And furthermore, all these businesses would have to find interim spaces to operate and accumulate the cost of associated moves. There are, as other speakers have said, many newly built retail spaces that have been sitting empty for several years in the area. One of those spaces includes a building at 633 East Broadway, which is across the street from us. And it is owned by the city and has been sitting derelict. It currently has squatters in it and has been out location for fires and graffiti as well. To speak to my business, Ketero is not just a business, it is also a lifeline for countless rescue cats. And it is an integral part of Vancouver's animal welfare community. Since opening, we have rescued, rehabilitated and rehomed over 1,500 cats who would otherwise have nowhere to go. We provide a safe and enriching environment for these animals while also offering an adoption model that helps to match them with loving families in our community. Beyond the cats, Ketero has become a sanctuary for people in our neighbourhood. We serve as a place of comfort for those struggling with loneliness, mental health challenges and the stresses of daily life. Our guests often share how visiting Ketero has helped them feel less isolated, provided them with a space of calm and connection. We host local nonprofit groups, including visitors from Coast Mental Health, Vancouver Coastal Health, B.C. Children's Hospital, Canap Place, PCRS, as well as seniors homes, care facilities and more. We foster a sense of belonging, and for many, our cafe is more than just a place to visit, it's also a part of their emotional wellbeing. The potential loss of our space would not only displace our business, but would also disrupt the critical services we provide to vulnerable animals and also to our community. Finding a new suitable location that allows us to continue our mission will be incredibly difficult. And the uncertainty surrounding this redevelopment leaves us very unsure. I would like to urge the city of Vancouver and the developers to consider the impact on small businesses and community organisations like ours when making redevelopment decisions. We request open dialogue and the opportunity to discuss possible solutions that allow us to continue our work, whether that means assistance in relocation costs or reconsideration of the current plan. We are asking for your support in ensuring that businesses like ours that contribute deeply to our community's social fabric are not overlooked in the face of redevelopment. Please consider the people and animals whose lives are directly impacted by these decisions. We would welcome a meeting to further discuss this matter and explore viable options for Ketero's future. Thank you for your time and consideration. We really hope to work together to find a way forward that preserves our valuable community.
Great. Thank you for calling in, Anna, and I see you take your work home with you. I understand we have another caller on the line, clerk. Oh, sorry, one in the chamber. Okay, go ahead, come on up. And I just need your name and whether or not you're a resident of Vancouver. They'll lower that for you.
Okay. I hated the opposite. I was like, oh, boy. My name is Vanessa and I'm a resident of Vancouver.
Okay, thank you, Vanessa. You have up to five minutes. Go ahead.
Okay. Hello, council. Thank you for allowing me your time. Please excuse my appearance. I just came from extracurriculars, but I thought this was an important public hearing to come to. I don't have much in the way of a speech, and I'm still new at public speaking, but I'm going to try my best for those in this room today as well as my community. I just became eligible to vote in the province, and I wanted to voice my opposition to this application. I lived in Yaltown, Olympic Village and now Mount Pleasant. And I can say without a doubt that Mount Pleasant has something that is truly special. The type of special that I strongly believe that we as all Vancouverites aspire to be, one with community. Local businesses like NOR and Ketero have been my home. When my friends needed somewhere to find community, we went to Ketero Movie Nights. We held gatherings at Pizza Barbarella, who, when asked, cited the rezoning as a major reason for throwing in the towel as simply a fight they didn't think that they could win. When we needed sriracha when no other grocer seemed to have it because there was a panic sparked by social media, we went to NOR. The owner remembered me. He asked me if I managed to fix my bike and asked how my family was because I had gone back to Toronto the month prior, and that really put a smile on my face. My friends and I look around and we see empty businesses across the street and all around us, vacant areas. We know that many of these were once local businesses too, that could remember their customers by name, who were staples of the community. We already feel the gap of NADA and now Pizza Barbarella. And as a new voter, I wholeheartedly request to keep what makes our neighbourhood so special in the place where it currently is. Thank you so much for your time.
Great, thank you, Vanessa. Clerk, do we have anybody else on the line? Okay. Hi, we have a caller on the line.
They will extend.
They're more likely to extend unless they're really behind and like even more so. Like they'll go someone over 10 o'clock.
Yeah, so for a while, though, I just have to meet you, just go back.
Sure. Okay. Hi, Jack, are you there? Jack, are you on the phone? Jack, we'll just get you to turn off your computer if you're there. Disconnected. Okay. Nobody else? Okay, seeing there are no further speakers, the speakers list is now closed. And seeing there are few or no public comments received after 5:00 p.m., I'm now closing the receipt of public comments as well. Does the applicant team have any closing comments? And does staff have any closing comments?
Thank you. We have no closing comments.
Any questions from council to staff? Councillor Frye, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. So, yeah, I was looking through this application and I'm a little confused why the TRPP is so incomplete. We typically get a sense of who's going to be eligible for the TRPP. And this says basically, subject to confirmation of eligibility. And I think Stephen Bohas was sort of touching on some of this. Could you walk me through the TRPP on this one?
Thank you, councillor. This is an unusual project wherein, rather than regular rental housing, it's proposing social housing. So in order to return to the rental units, applicant or residents at that time would have to qualify income test into the social housing. And I have my colleague Molly on the line as well, who can speak to this a little bit further from our housing team. Actually, my colleague Annie will speak to this from our housing team. Thank you, Annie.
Thanks for the question, Annie Moblis, with Housing Policy and Regulation. You're right, Councillor Frye. We do oftentimes have more information on tenants. However, the tenant relocation and protection policy really only requires applicants to notify tenants. And that's required before the rezoning application effectively goes public. There is typically a tenant meeting, but in the lead-up to public hearing, that's all really that we can require. I would say the vast majority of applicants do advance through to the eligibility letters being sent, surveys being filled out, and partly for staff so that we have more information and we're able to share that during a public hearing, but they're not required to do that. They are, though, required to do that by the development permit application phase. Otherwise, we would hold permits. So in this instance, we don't have the information. So you've noticed the different language in the report. However, we will get it as part of the development permit application phase.
Okay.
I don't know if that helps.
It does, but it doesn't. I mean, I would appreciate a little bit more clarity in knowing this as we're going into it. And just to the earlier comments around the confusion around the fact that this is social housing, because my understanding of social housing is only a small portion of the actual social housing is technically below market.
Yes, so in this case, with an inclusionary project, a portion of that floor area is social housing. So you do have to income test in to the social housing, that 30% rent gear to income, housing income limits. It's our minimum requirement. And so typically, nonprofit operators will draw from their B.C. housing waitlist. And through B.C. housing, there is income testing for all of their kind of people on those waitlists. And so if you don't income test in, you're often not on those lists, right, for the nonprofit sector? So, you know, and it's a hard one at this point in the process, like that income testing will happen at occupancy. And so, you know, our hope is that all of the tenants would income test into that social housing. If they don't income test in, our, you know, other thought on it is that some of these other projects that have below-market rental will be coming on stream and there'll be options in that below-market rental for some of those tenants potentially. It's hard to tell now, though, because we just don't have the information and at this point, we're not requiring income testing.
Yeah, that doesn't, I mean, for a variety of reasons, people will not meet income testing, potentially self-employment, what have you. So I do worry that this is incomplete. Okay, that's frustrating for me. I have another question unrelated to the, but thank you, Annie.
Okay, thank you.
On the, and I think it was Adrian Southern and of course Anna Van Egan both mentioned the issue around of vacant CRUs in the neighbouring area and conveniently within new builds. Is there any way that we can apply kind of conditions to ensure that we're not building overpriced vacant CRUs in this new project? And is that something that's, I realize it's not typical, but we have in the past, I recall a project for Chard on Hastings where we did kind of add rezoning conditions around the CRUs.
Hi, Councillor Frye, team here, senior planner. I'm not aware of any project, perhaps the one you referenced is something that we can look into. I'm not aware of any projects where we've placed a condition of that nature.
Yeah, we did. Oh, I'm out of time, but we did. We did.
Yeah, Councillor Frye, sorry, we are out of time. Seeing no one else in the queue, clerk, did we receive any additional public comments since the close of public comments? Okay, council will now make its decision on this application. Do we have a mover? Moved by Councillor Meisner, second.
Second.
Second by Councillor Kirby Young. Council, is there any discussion? Seeing, oh, Councillor Frye, go ahead.
Well, I just, thanks, Chair. I just have to name that I am really struggling with this. I think there's a couple of pieces here that, in particular, around the not having the the TRPP kind of articulated in a clear way. And notionally that we, this may not meet those TRPP objectives is a little frustrating for me. And I do wish we had a little bit more time in this and I could revisit some of what we had prescribed in the rezoning on East Hastings Street, where we did ask them to kind of ensure that they were pursuing CRUs that would be adequate neighbourhood fits and prioritise like local serving businesses rather than big chain stores. Of course, I don't have that handy to me right now. And so I think I might have to abstain on this vote because I don't feel I have all the information at hand to support this. I mean, I appreciate that there's social housing in here and new strata builds and that's probably necessary in this neighbourhood as well, but I need a little bit more information, so I'm going to abstain on this one. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Frye. Councillor Kirby Young.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, we always talk about the priority for housing here. I think what's, I really appreciate hearing from some of the advocates for the small businesses and the small businesses themselves. Clearly, we have strengthened our renter protections, but I do think this is a very important issue for council to be aware of and alive to with redevelopments and the impact that it has on small businesses. I know we've had some conversations before. There is potentially the opportunity to try to connect people to vacant space, whether it's city-owned space in the area. And I encourage applicants to make best practices, but I think that's something that we can take away in terms of potentially something that's going to become more prevalent and more of an issue as we're seeing more change in these neighbourhoods. The other thing that really struck me, because most of the projects we've had tonight have been rental housing or rental with below-market, is the significant difference, because it's been a while, to be honest, since we've had a strata project that I recall us approving. We had a lot at the first part of the last council. And then this council really shifted the priority with things like the MRT projects coming on stream or the short-term incentive rented program and others to deliver that housing. But we have seen the huge impact on the ability to generate CACs and DCLs and invest those in community amenities. And so it's quite noteworthy to really see the difference here of what a strata project can generate, not just in delivering the social housing, but also in delivering the cash that the city can invest in there. And so that's something that stood out for me because it's been a while since we've seen one of those coming through. And so, um, that's something that stood out for me, because it's been a while since we've seen one of those coming through. Um, anyhow, um, I will support this, but I do appreciate that. I'll follow it with staff and ensure that the businesses are reaching out. I'm glad to hear that there was sort of a relocation specialist provided, but perhaps there's some additional outreach that staff can do to some of the speakers and, um, identify space in the area. And as I said, I have a more that there's some city-owned space as well that's vacant that may or may not be appropriate, um, as an option. But I will, I will support it. Um, but I really appreciate the businesses coming forward and thank you for, um, bringing the very real impact of that to our attention.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I'm in agreement with my colleagues. Um, it's nice to hear from, um, the business perspective. Um, often we don't, um, that's not necessarily the first thing we think about with these proposals. We think about, you know, more housing units and, um, but the, the small businesses are really the heart of our communities and they're the reason that people want to live in these neighborhoods. So, um, to councillor Kirby Young and councillor Frye's points, I think we can take that away. Um, councillor Frye, I just wanted to let you know, it was twenty-seven thirty-five East Hastings Street, I believe, at Sloughan, where this, uh, this condition around local businesses, uh, was in. I, I managed to find the report, so I'll send that to you and any, any other councillors who are interested. But, uh, it does mention that, uh, at that time, concerns were received regarding the loss of existing businesses on site and that the application proposed small commercial units for local serving retail. Um, I don't know what sort of other conditions, uh, were around that, if they were just meant to be small C R U's versus big ones. But, uh, I'll look into that further, um, in, in the next few days. Um, I totally get, um, the concerns around, um, not just being able to retain the businesses that are on site, but not having like large, you know, drugstore bank type thing replace what were like local, um, serving businesses. So, um, I will support this because of the housing and the social housing component. Um, but, uh, we will, uh, you know, look into the, um, the business issue. I think it's an important point that was raised tonight, so thanks.
Thank you councillor Meisner. Uh, councillor Frye, see you back on the queue.
Yeah, and thank, and thanks Chair. Um, just to follow up on that, yes, and that was the, the amendment. In fact, it was my amendment councillor Meisner, uh, that you're referencing, that we did bring in. It was really around the size of the C R U's and in an effort to prevent big chain stores from coming in on, on that part of, uh, the East Village. Um, because we felt that that was an important kind of identity thing. I'm not sure that it would be as applicable here, but I think it is a takeaway, uh, certainly because we know some of the, the C R U's across the street are maybe a little bit bigger and harder to tenant, so, um. And I just want to say, uh, because I'm assuming hopefully that Anna Van Egan from Katoro is, uh, still listening to this. Uh, and I encourage, uh, them to get in touch, because I, I, I have been to Katoro and I, I know what a valuable asset it is. And I can imagine it's very tricky to find it as a, a, a unique kind of use, so I hope they get in touch with us or me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor Frye. Seeing no one else in the queue, I'll remind council members that are participating virtually, who, uh, have their video disabled, they will be marked absent from the vote pursuant to section fourteen point one-three of the procedure by law. And I'm now going to call a vote. So clerks, if you can take us to a voting screen and council, please register your vote. Uh, so that, uh, sorry, that passes with no one in opposition. Uh, and sorry councillor, and an abstention from councillor Frye, yes. Okay, we're gonna move on to our final item, number five, C D one rezoning, uh, two-nine-five-zero Prince Edward Street. Before we begin the agenda item, if anyone believes they have a conflict of interest, now is the time to declare it. Does anyone have a conflict of interest to declare? Councillor Frye?
Yeah, uh, thanks Chair. I do have a conflict of interest. Uh, my wife works for the firm, uh, that is on the application.
Okay, noted that councillor Frye is declaring a conflict.
With that, I bid you goodnight.
Goodnight, yes. Uh, just reminder to the other councillors online, we are at exact quorum right now. So, uh, you're gonna have to leave your cameras on, uh, for this last item. Um, clerk will now read the application.
There's an application by Quad Wheel Property Group to rezonate twenty-nine fifty Prince Edward Street from commercial and residential to comprehensive development district to permit the development of a mixed-use building with towers of thirty-two stories and twenty-five stories, containing five hundred forty-two rental units, of which twenty percent of the residential floor area for below-market rental units. A thirty-seven space private child daycare facility and ground floor commercial space. A floor space ratio of eight point five and maximum height of hundred point six meter with additional height or rooftop amenity space are proposed. General manager of planning urban design sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation. The following correspondence has been received since referred to public hearing, twenty pieces in support, eleven pieces in opposition, and this represents all correspondence received up to five P M. today.
Hey, thank you. This is the first call for speakers. Any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free one-eight-three-three-three-five-three-eight-six-one-zero, followed by the participant code one-zero-six-one-four-four-five-pound. Before the close of the speakers list, that phone number will be posted on X and made available in the livestream. There will be an opportunity for new speakers and missed speakers to be added to the end of the registered speakers list. And we do have staff from planning urban design and sustainability here to present the application. Go ahead.
Hi, acting mayor and council. Uh, my name is Simon Jay and I'm the rezoning planner for this application being considered under the Broadway Plan. The site outlined in red is located at the intersection of Kingsway, Prince Edward Street and East Thirteenth Avenue. The site operates as a surface parking lot for the adjacent Mount St. Joseph Hospital and an informal dog park. There are no buildings or existing tenants on site. The area is well-served by public transit, bike routes, parks, schools, childcare and community facilities. And the future Mount Pleasant Skytrain station will be a seven-hundred-meter walk to the northwest. The proposal is located in the Mount Pleasant, uh, centre, uh, area C, subarea of the Broadway Plan. The plan anticipates a mixed-use building up to twenty-five stories and eight-point-five F S R for a development containing market rental, below-market rental and commercial front in Kingsway. The application was submitted on January the nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. The proposal is for towers of thirty-two and twenty-five stories over a four-story podium. The proposal contains five hundred and forty-two rental units with twenty percent of residential floor area for below-market rental units. It also contains ground floor commercial, a private childcare, two privately owned public spaces and a mid-block connection. The density is eight-point-five F S R. And the recommended maximum tower heights are one hundred point six meters and eighty-one meters with additional height for rooftop amenities. This table shows the average starting rents for below-market and market rental units, as well as the average annual household incomes they serve. A Q and A period was held last year from March the twenty-seventh to April the ninth, and a total of one hundred and eighty-one pieces of correspondence were received. Support was received for the private childcare, rental housing, the density and the positive impact that development will have on the neighborhood. Concern received relates to, to the height, scale, neighborhood impact, school shadowing, traffic and parking. In response, staff note the proposed density of the development is consistent with the intent of the plan. The thirty-two-story tower exceeds the planned height, but is supported by staff as it facilitates the inclusion of more open space at the ground level on an irregular-shaped lot. The additional height is also subject to a staff condition that restricts any new shadowing on Florence Nineteen Gell School. In response, uh, to concerns about parking and traffic, the development will replace a surface parking lot used by Mount St. Pleasant, Mount St. Joseph Hospital. Provincial healthcare is aware of the application and have plans in place to provide sufficient parking for staff, patients and visitors during construction and after development. Parking is also required to meet the parking bylaw. And the existing good transit connections will be enhanced by the opening of the future Mount Pleasant Skytrain Station. The public benefits accruing from this application are the five hundred and forty-two rental units with twenty percent at below-market. The development cost levies and public art contribution are estimated to be approximately seven point nine million dollars. The applicant is seeking, uh, citywide D C R waiver for the residential floor area, which is valued at approximately ten point one million dollars. The site was not subject to a C, C A C review as the below-market rental units offset any land left. Therefore, no C A C is required. In conclusion, this proposal meets the Broadway Plan and staff support that this application subject to conditions. Staff and the applicant team are available to answer questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Does the applicant team have a presentation at all?
Good evening. My name is Vanessa, representing Quad Wheel Property Group. We do not have a presentation tonight, however, uh, the Quad Wheel team, the architectural team and also the landscape team is available for questions in person. Thank you.
Okay, um, are there any questions from council to staff or the applicant team noting that this is the only opportunity for council to ask questions of the applicant? And I see councillor Kirby Young, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. I, I don't often ask this as much with respects to the building form and aesthetics, because a lot of that happens at, uh, obviously the form through the, uh, D P, um, and through the other further processes that refine it. But I don't think, I don't recall seeing such a lo, sort of large, um, development with the large two towers and such little detail. Is this the only rendering that we have available of this project? Is this it?
There are a number of renderings in the design package. There's not just one. There's a number of them.
Okay, is there, I, I'm just asking because again, I don't usually, um, opine on this, but it, there doesn't appear to be a lot of detail and it's a particularly, and I, I don't wanna be critical, but not, not an inspiring building. Um, do you have anything else that you want to share with council?
Councillor Kirby Young, I might, uh, I think some renderings did get sent around. I can email them to you if.
Yeah, I'm just pulling up the.
I just sent them to you right now.
Yeah, I'm just pulling them up from the public website, but. Okay. All right, it's, um, I'll leave it there. It's not as much of a question, maybe more of a reaction. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Zhou.
Yeah, thanks Chair. Just wanna ask a quick, quick question. So I realize this is, uh, a site very close to the Mount St. Joseph Hospital, very important healthcare facility in the east side of Vancouver, and with over five hundred units. I wonder if the applicant, uh, also consider workforce housing for the hospital staff?
We haven't specifically considered workforce housing, but there has been early conversations, um, throughout, uh, since we've been communicating with Mount St. Joseph on the parking elements. Um, but in addition to that, I think there's an opportunity to, um, provide synergies in, in terms of the proximity of our building, uh, to the Mount St. Joseph Hospital. Um, we think that there could be an opportunity for, um, you know, further collaborations or, uh, potentially housing any of the nurses or doctors and other hospital staff. So we're in the very early stages, uh, you know, upon approval, we can continue to have those. Thank you.
Thank you for the answer. Thank you. Thanks Chair. That's all my, all my question.
Okay, thanks councillor Zhou. I am gonna make the second call for speakers. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free one-eight-three-three-three-five-three-eight-six-one-zero, followed by participant code one-zero-six-one-four-four-five-pound before the close of the speakers list. Phone number will be posted on X and made available on the livestream. I'm just looking at the time, um, uh, it's ten to ten and I'm wondering if, uh, anyone in council, uh, has a desire to, uh, to make a motion to go past ten o'clock.
Have you moved a motion chair to complete the agenda?
Sorry, I see councillor Meisner on the, on the panel.
I, I was gonna move the same motion, so I'm happy to second councillor Bligh.
Okay, sorry, and the motion was to.
Extend to complete.
Extend to complete, okay, and it's seconded by, so motion, uh, extend to complete by councillor Bligh, seconded by councillor Meisner. We will need, uh, a unanimous vote here with only six of us, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Aye.
Nobody opposed? Okay, motion passes, carries. We will continue. Um, we'll now hear from the members of the public. Any registered speakers in the council team, please come forward to the podium when your name is called. And, uh, we'll start with speaker number one on the phone, Neil Wiles.
Everyone, second time, uh, this evening, and thank you for extending, because I've listened to the whole thing from start to end. And I was like, oh, please don't cut us off and go to the next day. Uh, as you know, um, I'm the director of the Mount Pleasant B I A, um, and we are all about small business. Uh, and throughout the evening, I've been listening to, uh, the challenges of people, uh, getting rental, finding rental. Um, this is a huge rental project and it's going on a parking lot. Um, you know, we're not displacing anyone here, uh, no businesses are needed to be moved. Um, I can't wait to see shovels in the ground here, so hopefully we can get some of these other, uh, these other folks relocated into a property like this. Uh, we are about the business, um, and I know that my own staff are struggling to find, uh, places in the neighborhood. So, uh, I am hoping to see this, uh, move ahead as quickly as possible. Um, because I, it, it's just, we need places for people to live. Uh, I was talking to the C E O of Coast Mental Health today, and he lives in Port Moody and works at Eleventh, uh, and Kingsway there, because he can't find a place to live. Um, so over time, we're seeing more and more people move away, uh, and struggle to find some housing. Um, so I, I wanna be brief. Uh, all in all, I think this application, uh, represents a win, uh, for the neighborhood and for the businesses. Uh, it'll activate this corner that's just been a, a parking lot. I will be sad to see the tree go. Um, but other than that, uh, housing, childcare, uh, and some additional businesses, uh, to help service the neighborhood. I hope you support this application. Uh, there we go. I'm brief.
Thank you, Neil. I will move on to speak, uh, speaker number two, Christina Florencio. Christina, you on the phone?
Can anybody hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have up to five minutes.
Good evening, everybody, acting mayor and councillors. Yes, I'm Christina Florencio and I've been a resident of Mount Pleasant since two thousand and eight. I'd like to express my support for this proposal at twenty-nine fifty Prince Edward Street. Uh, not only do I reside here, but I also own and operate a business in Mount Pleasant. A project like this is much needed for this growing community that's gonna bring over five hundred secure market and below-market rental homes alongside a daycare and retail shops. New homes means more families will have housing and in turn will support local businesses. The location is ideal and accessible right in front of the number nineteen bus. And it's just a ten-minute walk to the future Mount Pleasant subway station. So providing more rental homes close to rapid transit fulfills the intent of the Broadway Plan and enhances the livability of this area. And like Neil said, the fact that the current site is a parking lot is a reason enough to move this forward. Vancouver desperately needs more homes and no one here at the site is being displaced. This project is giving us the opportunity to add over five hundred quality homes to the rental housing supply. So to me, and I'm sure that to most people, this is a very winning scenario for everyone. Um, my last thoughts are, is if you could please consider approving this project. I believe, um, like Neil said, it will be bringing a lot more much-needed housing to people in the community and for many others. And I thank you all for your time.
Great, thank you, Christina. We'll move on to speaker number three, Selena Loam.
Good evening councillors, thank.
Sorry, go ahead. You have up to five minutes.
Awesome. Good evening councillors, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Selena Loam. I'm a resident of Vancouver and I'm here to express my strong support for this project. This project not only helps address the ongoing housing crisis, but also provides much-needed solution for the shortage of daycare facilities in our community. Essentially located daycare for, for proposed thirty-seven children will be a game changer for families and particularly those relying on public transportation. This proposed location is just steps away from Mount Pleasant, Mount St. Joseph Hospital and walking distance to, to the new Broadway subway line, making an ideal spot for working parents. parents. My sister, an experienced E C teacher with a background in top institutions like Montessori and C F A, and I are eager to, to open up a childcare center. Our vision is to provide a play-based learning environment with a structured routine helping children thrive and grow, fostering creativity and encouraging children to develop a habit of expressing new ideas. We have been actively searching for the right location and are very interested in operating the proposed childcare facility within this development. Accessible, high-quality childcare near workplaces and transit hubs allows parents to focus on their careers with a peace of mind. My support for this project, we, by supporting this project, we are investing in families, the workforce, and the future of our community. I fully support the initiative and hope to make this vision a reality. Thank you.
Great, thank you Selena. We'll move to speaker number four, James Priestley. In person. No? Okay, we'll move on to speaker five, Stephen Boas. Yep. Okay, go ahead. You have up to five minutes.
Okay, thank you councillors. My name's Stephen Boas. I live in Vancouver. I used to live in Mount Pleasant. Going to speak in opposition to this rezoning and one of the key issues with this rezoning is solar access to Florence Nightingale Elementary School. And I have a photo here taken on March the first at two thirty P M. Next slide please. This is a model I built, a massive model to show shadows at the same time, March first two thirty P M. And you can see that a thirty-two story tower would cast a very, very long shadow, which would just get longer earlier in this year. Next slide. Now, let's look at what a scenario, what if you actually had the maximum of twenty-five stories per section ten point eleven point one of the Broadway Plan, which limits the height to twenty-five stories and not thirty-two stories. Incidentally, F S R maximum is, is eight. So there is a big difference in solar access. Next slide. Here's another view looking along twelfth and north into the schoolyard at the same time, March first two thirty P M. There's already a very huge impact on the school's solar access, both in the front and backyards from these two towers. Next slide. You can see the schoolyard, you've got a lot of access to light. There are kids usually playing here. I took these photos on the weekend, so I'm not good kid photos. And the interesting thing here is that the applicant is Quadrial, which happens to be the financial arm of the B C teachers pension fund, so the teacher, their financial arm is looking at shading the schoolyard excessively. And there is a violation of the solar access on the spring and fall equinox as John Grotenberg already said that this is protected between ten and four P M with no exceptions in the Broadway Plan. Next slide. And you can see the Broadway Plan there, black and white, look it up. And this site is actually located in a solar priority area where, you know, it says twenty-five stories is the maximum, subject to a solar priority limits and it could be a little bit lower for the tower that is twenty-five stories. Next slide. But that, that is there, there are no exceptions. Next slide. Here is a view on the equinox, which is coming up soon, three thirty P M. And there is definitely a shadow on the equinox from both of the towers, the Broadway Plan, solar access policy is, would be broken. And this is kind of at the cusp of precipice because the kids actually are at school between the fall equinox and the spring equinox. They use the schoolyard. And we should try to preserve as much solar access as possible in this timeframe. Next slide. I'll look at a few other slides. Got my computer here, we can do this in real time. Here, we're back at the two thirty P M just a few weeks ago or just one and a half weeks ago, March the twentieth. Very big impact. Now, if you held the line at twenty-five stories on one of them, you'd have sunlight. Next slide. If we go into February the twentieth, one fifteen P M, you're already getting shadowing on almost a good part of the front yard there from a thirty-two story tower. And that's a huge impact on schools, also on the windows for classrooms, kids getting natural light or sitting in the shade. Think there are huge impacts there and you, council should really apply the maximum heights in the Broadway Plan for this site and look at solar access improvements. And there is also the time difference that I think everyone else knows with the shadows changing when we set the times ahead and before. Next slide. Same similar situation one month after the fall equinox, a lot of shading happening at three P M and we can, we stepped through this. And this analysis wasn't done. It was done in previous rezonings. I remember at Saint Augustine's, there was a lot of planned development work done on the shadows and this was not done and there are huge impacts throughout the school year on Florence Nightingale Elementary School. And if you start setting precedence of having towers of this height on the other side, you're, you're really going to be shading the entire schoolyard for a good chunk of the school year. And Robson Park's just up the street in case anyone wants public space, just a block or two way. Next slide. Here is two thirty P M on March the first. Again, next slide. From another view, and this is the scenario where you lower thirty-two story tower to twenty-five stories, so I urge council to lower the heights and put the density on the podiums instead. Thank you for your time.
Good on time Stephen. Our next speaker, speaker number six, Lewis Vellegas.
Okay, go ahead. You have. My name is Lewis Vellegas. I've been practicing urbanism in Vancouver since nineteen eighty-five and resident here during that time. Next slide please. It is a fallacy that by giving away height and density, housing prices will come down. Council postures, this is the law supplies and demand, supply and demand in economics, yet it is abundantly clear that the commodity that is in short supply is land, not towers. Thus, the emperor is not wearing any clothes. Next slide please. It is nakedly obvious that profit motive is driving this process. The council has been captured by the development industry and is giving away density and height. Next slide please.
Chair, you know what I'm going to say?
I was just going to say, Lewis, I'm going to warn you to watch your language and make sure that, that you're not using any defamatory comments, so just please moderate your language accordingly, okay?
Are you talking about being captured by industry? Is that?
Just.
I mean, did you watch the R F K campaign?
Please just avoid any defamatory comments. Please go ahead.
It's obvious that this policy is harming families and households in Vancouver with land lift inflation, with crowding, with crowding out cottages with towers by allowing towers to build without any regard for contributing to the historic location. In this particular case, with so much unrealized opportunity for creating a series of people-oriented public open spaces. Next slide please. The right plan for Vancouver, as I've suggested in a previous presentation, is mountains on top, towers, and then human scale neighborhoods. And Mount Pleasant is definitely a human scale neighborhood. Even if the scale of Kingsway seems monstrous and made for towers, it's really an opportunity to create Paris in our city. And then look, we would have no land lift and no housing crisis. Next slide please. Brief history of how we got here, nineteen eighty-five, Skytrain was built on the guise that automated transit would bypass labor strikes. In nineteen ninety-six, the livable regions plan introduced the Skytrain and Towers paradigm. In two thousand and eleven, the regional growth strategies doubled down on that gambit. Then two thousand and twelve, the Mount Pleasant plan was a thinly veiled hunt for tower sites in our neighborhood. In two thousand and twenty-two, the Broadway Plan fiasco was created. In two thousand and twenty-three, it was followed by the provincial T O A mandate. In two thousand and twenty-four, the Broadway Plan was amended to give away more density and more height to developers. Last weekend in Seattle, developers were telling me that housing demand in Vancouver is drying up. Next slide please. The mere appearance of quid pro quo between government and industry puts our democracy on the knife edge. Next slide please. From the liberal regions plan, foisting Skytrain and towers and unsuspecting public to the Broadway Plan giving away D C Cs and C A Cs to developer, government has beaten the path to the unthinkable, promoting the cumulative effects of crowding by delivering uninhabitable housing units. That was uninhabitable housing units. Next slide please. The increase in the cost of housing is all in the land, thus council should be adding access to land, not double towers on our neighborhoods. Next slide. Government needs to follow a simple three-step strategy. One, impose a tower moratorium. Two, build gap. Three, build L R T streetcar. Next slide. Earlier tonight, I provided an overview of gap, guaranteed affordable housing in perpetuity. Next slide. I explain why Skytrain is a people mover technology that costs twelve times more to build than L R T, making it too expensive for it to go where people need to go, which is to places where land is cheaper so they can buy affordable housing. Next slide please. Skytrain also has half the carrying capacity of L R T and on Broadway, it has one quarter the capacity because of the problem with the Skytrain loop is full. Here I show H O V lanes just to remind us that even though H O V lanes cost the same as Skytrain in Vancouver and carry one eighth as much passenger capacity, the ability of the freedom of movement that is provided by private cars is still something that is fundamental to our economy and to providing freedom to our population. Next slide please. Nevertheless, four Skytrain, sorry, L R T lines are sort of imagined in this council strategy to end the housing crisis. And as you can see, when you compare these lines to the length of the Broadway.
I'm sorry Lewis, unfortunately you are out of time.
It's good. That was my last slide. Thank you.
We're going to move to speaker seven, Harry Ellis. Harry Ellis, are you on the phone?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Harry. You have up to five minutes.
Okay, fantastic. So yeah, my name's Harry Ellis. I'm a lifelong resident of Mount Pleasant here. And I'll try to keep it brief. I'm in support of this building. I think density is great. I think we need more of it. I'm pretty young, so I've seen the effects of the housing crisis and the lack of affordable housing and, or any housing has been to a lot of my friends and my family as well. But I guess I kind of wanted to speak to something else that I've noticed, which is missing from most of these plans, which kind of has been the lack of infrastructure surrounding the actual buildings, specifically in terms of pedestrian safety and increased traffic in the neighborhoods. And I'm not talking about like parking because that's like a nothing burger in my opinion. But for example, for another, I guess, contemporary Vancouver development example, if you look at S N O C, they have very detailed plans for proposed street modifications, which include like protected intersections and new bike lanes. And we haven't seen any such plans for any of these Broadway Plan ones, which I think is a little bit concerning. I realize that the situation's different for S N O C because the land being developed includes the roads that are adjacent to the buildings and that's not the case for these buildings. But the kind of radio silence from the actual, I guess municipal government about improving these areas has been kind of concerning to me. I'm twenty-five, I've been living in Mount Pleasant for twenty-five years, my whole life, and I've seen it grow into a very popular neighborhood, which draws in a lot of traffic. And this is traffic both from locals and people from, you know, there's out on the town coming in to check things out, which is fair. And if you walk around these days, it kind of feels like traffic's getting a lot worse and driving's getting a lot worse, especially at night. It's very poorly lit around here. I'm sure anybody who's still listening in at this point who lives in this area can attest like trying to cross the residential street and almost getting smug by Uber driver, like a Tesla or like a Uber driver in a Despero or something. And this is not like an unsolvable issue that's inherent to densification. I think it's the influx in vehicle traffic is a result of city and neighborhood growth mixed with the lack of care and attention for pedestrian safety, which I guess is like a broader cultural issue, but I think it can be mitigated with city planning, like building modal filters, concrete barriers, people saw this tough streetlights. And I just hope that moving forward, the safety and the livability of the neighborhoods are going to be accounted for because building a neighborhood is more than just building houses, feel to live in them, the people actually have to be comfortable and feel safe. And I've seen Vancouver produce some pretty great bike infrastructure in the past. And I've seen, you know, light up crosswalks built in my neighborhood, but not enough and stuff like that. So yeah, I hope that the government will take, I guess, a proactive, it's not a proactive, at least an active listening approach to, because there will be issues. That's all, I don't have staff to back this up. It just, the more growth the neighborhood is going to see, the more people are going to be caught, even if they don't drive cars, it's going to be more, you know, Uber vehicles and other things, which I'm just hoping that we can tackle these issues. And yeah, I support this development. I think density in rental buildings are great, but if you really want a constructive and progressive vision for a new future Mount Pleasant, I think we should be doing a lot more surrounding the buildings as well. So I'm just hoping we get some of that going, if not now, then later. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Harry, for your comments. I'm going to make a third and final call for speakers. If there are any speakers to this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by the participant code one zero six one four four five pound before the close of the speakers list. That phone number will be posted on X and made available on the live stream. I understand we have speaker number eight on the phone, Robert. Robert, if you're there, could we just get your last name as well and if you're a resident of Vancouver?
Yeah, my last name is E Y E R S and I'm a resident of Vancouver and Mount Pleasant specifically.
Okay, you have up to five minutes. Go ahead.
Yeah, good evening, mayor and council. Yeah, my name's Robert Eysen. I'm calling to voice my support for the project at two nine five zero Prince Edward. As a resident in the area, I've been in Mount Pleasant for nearly a decade. I actually live within walking distance of this and with a young family, I think this is going to be a great addition to our neighborhood. We are in, seriously, there are some more retail amenities, cafes, shops, small businesses. And I see, and as well as that, I see from the design that, you know, it's providing some good communal areas, specifically in Plaza. You know, this is a really kind of tight knit and community and with a large number of young families and any space that facilitates families spending time together is welcome in my opinion. My family specifically, like many others, consists of four, two working, full-time working parents. And our biggest stress and challenge we have is childcare. It's well known around the city, the issues that are there and they're very real and any effort to address this is important and as provided here by a pretty sizable daycare. I'm very much in favor and supportive of much needed additional housing, specifically rental housing, as provided here and especially those homes more affordably priced, all within a location on Kingsway that's incredibly accessible. I think it's the perfect location. Overall, I'm impressed with the design. I know it's going to be great for our neighborhood and our community and I look forward to seeing it approved. Thanks very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Great, thank you, Robert. We'll move to our next speaker, number nine, Andrea. You there Andrea?
Yeah, hello.
Hi, we just need your last name and if you're a resident of Vancouver.
Yes, yeah, my name's Andrea Abelson and I'm a resident of East Vancouver.
Okay, you have up to five minutes. Go ahead.
Okay, thanks. So hello, my name is Andrea Abelson and I would like to offer my support to the application before you. I know it's been a long night with many speakers, so I'll be very brief. I am a resident of East Vancouver. My parents also live right down the street from this proposed development. I think this development will be a welcome addition to the neighborhood and I hope the city will take advantage of the opportunity to generate new housing, childcare spaces and to, and retail along rapid transit with no displacement. Again, I support this project and I hope to see it move ahead to construction. Thanks for the chance to comment.
Great, thanks for calling in Andrea. If there are any additional speakers in the council team, please come forward to the podium. Okay, seeing nobody, we'll take a five minute recess for any additional speakers to call in or come forward. Thanks. Thanks. Counselor Kirby Young. There we go, okay. Um... Clerk, I understand we have a couple, uh, speakers. Oh, okay, speaker four, James Priestley, you there?
Yes.
Go ahead, James, you have up to four, up to five minutes.
Uh, thanks for taking my call. Uh, I'm a first-time caller, longtime resident. Um, uh, my apologies, I've got a sinus infection, so I may start, uh, coughing. Um, uh, I first want to just, uh, thank the councillors and the mayor and the various planning staff, uh, for their, um, their good intentions, and I trust that they have good and honorable intentions. And I don't have, um, I don't have anything to speak to in disagreement with the Broadway Plans, um, in general, their objectives and the principles of it. Uh, I'm just, uh, quite confused, I'm confused in terms of, um, and I'll raise some of the questions, I can also follow up afterward, uh, in terms of, um, via the written version for questions that can't be answered tonight. Um, the first one is, um, uh, the Bank of Canada came out with a update report yesterday, and they talked about major threats to, um, to the, um, the economic situation in Canada, as well as, um, in B.C., which Dave, our premier David Eby has also spoken to, uh, with all the economic uncertainty going on in, um, with the Trump tariffs. Um, and one of my questions are, uh, I'm not, I haven't seen anything in terms of updates of what the city is doing in terms of... I get you having to do a major balancing act of trying to achieve multiple objectives, such as affordable housing, uh, for buying or for renters, as well as maximizing community, uh, community, uh, development initiatives, um, or community benefits. Um, but I haven't seen anything in terms of, uh, one, uh, adjustments that the city is considering or doing to make sure they're maximizing, um, uh, redevelopment opportunities. Um, the second red flag that comes up for me for that, assuming if your revenue streams are reduced by ten, twenty, or thirty percent, depending on how chaotic things are gonna be for the next, uh, three years and ten months with the Trump administration. The second one is, um, I'm, I don't see anything in the Broadway's plan. I've looked through a lot of it, it's, I think it's a hundred, five-hundred-and-thirty-seven pages. And I attended one of the Mount Pleasant, um, uh, gatherings with the different planners and other staff. And when I talked to them, I said, "Everything in your objectives and your, um, your objectives and your planning principles, everything in it says you do not wanna repeat the errors of tower sprawl, of the unplanned, uncoordinated, or uncohesive ugly effects of tower sprawl," which we have, I've witnessed in the last thirty years, all the way along Kingsway, from Seventh Avenue right up to, uh, um, Boundary Road, roughly at Forty-Ninth Avenue. Um, everything in your planning document seems to imply master-planned, well-designed master-planned communities that maximize, uh, the synergistic benefits of, um, uh, which overlaps with your fifteen-minute city goal. I don't see anywhere in your document that says, uh, the city needs, would want to be assessing every single provincial, municipal, and federal crown lands that, uh, could be available for, uh, master-planned community developments. Um, and I, uh, that's my first question, is if the city has, uh, assessed where the top, such as ten or top ten or top twenty crown lands that are existing in the city, or even other private lands where there are synergistic opportunities to double or triple the density of those grounds, uh, with some potential synergistic, what you call keystone or linchpin, uh, properties that are adjoining those crown lands. Um, that's, that's one question, because the, the major concern I have is everything in the documents for this proposal, I don't have anything objections with the past speakers touting the benefits of this proposal. But one of those crown lands this project sits on is the Mount St. Joseph's lands, which is four-point-four hectares. The city of Burnaby did do that type of, uh, uh, collaborative working with, I think, three different parties, B.C. Hydro, B.C. Housing, Burnaby Lands, and I think a, a fourth partner, to develop the Kingsway Admins, um, lot to be a master-planned community, uh, creating twenty-four-hundred, not, uh, twenty-four-hundred, um, housing, uh, rental units, including some, uh, social housing units. Um, and what I'm confused is, this entire presentation, um, I guess, my, the big concern is everyone, uh... Sorry, for, um, my nervousness with...
My apologies, James, we are at time.
We're with, oh, you are at time, okay. Uh, I will follow up with questions in terms of how they are assessing those ones, because the, the Mount St., if I'm, first of all, the Mount St. Joseph's property could be ten times the level.
We do need to get onto our next caller.
For sure, thank you.
And we do have another caller, uh, Jack. Is Jack on the line?
Yeah, I'm here.
Go ahead, Jack, I just need your last name and whether you're a resident of Vancouver.
Uh, my last name's Rowden, and I am a resident of Vancouver.
I'm sorry, can you say that one more time?
Uh, my last name is Rowden, R-O-W-D-E-N, and I'm a resident of Vancouver.
Great, you have up to five minutes, go ahead.
Okay. Um, good evening, councillors, my name is Jack Rowden, and I'd like to offer my support to this project. Um, I work in the area, and I think that more rental housing is needed in Vancouver, and I don't think that we can build it fast enough to keep up the demand. And we have an opportunity to generate new rental housing at prime location Mount Pleasant, right next to our school, with zero displacement of existing rental homes. I hope to see this project move forward, thank you for your time.
Great, thank you, uh, and, uh, next caller, James Lloyd, James, you on the line? Hello, James?
Hi, uh, thank you for hearing me at this late hour.
Thanks, James, we just need to know if you're a resident of Vancouver before you go ahead.
Yes, I am.
Great, you have up to five minutes.
Okay, thanks, yeah, I'm a long-term renter in, uh, Mount Pleasant, and I'm voting in opposition to this, uh, uh, application. Um, for the same reason that I've objected to the, um, profusion of towers, um, that have been suggested in this area, um, in the sense that they are antithetical to what the character of Mount Pleasant is. Um, being against towers, though, does not mean I'm against housing. I know the area under discussion, I live a few blocks from it, and I think it might be an ideal area to put something neighborhood-appropriate, um, an apartment building that could be six to eight floors, that was entirely affordable housing, um, if that's what government and city officials wanted and were willing to fund it. But when you're talking towers, you're talking business, and you're talking about changing the nature of the neighborhood, which, as we know, does lead to displacement down the road, even though there's nobody living in that particular area, because we know what this neighborhood's becoming. Uh, we know it's how unaffordable it is. I'm very lucky to still be here. So, this is my overall objection to the concept of a tower. In this particular case, my concern is also in regard to the hospital adjacent to it. Uh, we're not just tearing up the little green area, talking about getting rid of that parking lot that serves that hospital. Um, we use that hospital and rely on it as, um, neighbors in this area. Um, many people do, um, rely on this Mount St. Joseph's hospital, as opposed to the ZGH, um, for its accessibility, um, and the ease of use. Uh, I can't imagine what it is to visit the chaos of construction right next to it. Remove that parking space, I know of no other space where that parking space would migrate to that serves that hospital. Um, I don't know what the, uh, noise, um, and like I said, um, the interference of construction would mean to the hospital's patients, uh, those staying overnight. Um, these streets, um, it's just, they've never been structured for this kind of construction. They're very narrow streets, I don't know what it means in terms of access to the hospital. And I do find it odd that nobody representing the hospital is speaking on this matter. I don't know if it's been researched or not, but, uh, the council, I heard somebody mention it earlier, and it seemed inconclusive. Um, so I'm not, I don't have my clock up here, so I do wanna watch for my five minutes. But those are the key points I wanted to make in regard to, um, this, uh, application.
Okay, thank you, James. Uh, clerk, do we have any additional speakers on the line or in person? Okay. Seeing no further speakers, the speakers list is now closed. Seeing as there are few or no public comments received after the recess, I'm gonna close the receipt of public comments as well. Um... Does the applicant have any closing comments? Oh, okay, does staff have any closing comments?
No closing comments, thanks.
Closing comments. Counsel, any questions for staff? And Counselor Kirby Young?
No, I'm just happy to move the recommendations, thanks.
Okay. Um, clerk, do we have any, uh, additional public comments since the close of public comments? No, okay. Uh, council, it's now time to make a decision. Uh, it's been moved by Counselor Kirby Young, do we have a second, or Counselor Meisner, second? And council, is there any discussion? See, Counselor Meisner, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll be quick, um, it's late, and, uh, but just wanted to make some comments. Um, I think, uh, this is a significant amount of rental housing and, um, no displacement. Um, it is, uh, currently a parking lot. Um, so we're talking about five-hundred units here, twenty percent below market. Uh, childcare, which is, uh, as we all know, desperately needed. Um, and I think it'll be great for small businesses in Mount Pleasant, so I was really happy to hear, uh, a few of them call in, as well as the, uh, Mount Pleasant BIA president. So, um, looking forward to seeing this, uh, important, uh, rental housing development move forward. So I'll be supporting it.
Right, there you go, Counselor Meisner, I'm gonna call the vote now, since no one else is in the queue. If the clerks can take to a voting screen, council, please register your vote. And a reminder, any councillors who are, uh, have their video disabled will be marked absent for the, for the vote. Okay, and... That is, uh, no, no one in opposition with, uh, Counselor Frye declaring the conflict.
Motion to adjourn?
Uh, motion to adjourn by Counselor Kirby Young, second, and by Counselor Meisner, all in favor? Opposed, carried, meeting's adjourned, thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much, Chair. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.